Okay, folks. We're just about ready to begin. This should only take about four years or so.
Ferguson, sit down.
So we'll call this meeting to order. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and media may also be audibly or visually recording this meeting, as well a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to the non-audible function during these committee meetings. We start, as always, with you, Madam Clerk. If there are any changes to the agenda, please let us know.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. There are changes to the agenda. The one change to the agenda is an amending motion to item 5.2. Technically, it's not, neither one of these are a change, but that you need to be aware of them. Item 5.2 has an amending motion that's before you on pink. So after we go through all of the presentations, and the presentations are received, when you go to debate the report, staff have put this before you for consideration. As well, item 5.2 on page four of the recommendations, the daily rate shown in the table on that page currently reads $30.40. It should read $28.80. Everybody get that?
We did, and we can deal with that at the appropriate time as well. So we can still have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Yes.
We'll deal with that at the appropriate time. We can still approve this agenda as presented. So that is moved by Counselor Pearson and seconded by Counselor Nann. All in favor?
Very, very.
All right. Declarations of interest, any? Seeing none. And now, before we move forward with today's committee business, Counselor Nann would like to address the committee. Counselor Nann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that today, the first meeting of GIC for this term of council, takes place on December 6th. December 6th is a national day of remembrance and action on violence against women. This is a day of mourning for all of us, and especially women, including trans women and non-binary folks. In 1989, a man walked into a school in Montreal and singled out women studying to become engineers. He said, "You are women. You're going to be engineers. You're all a bunch of feminists, and I hate feminists." And then he proceeded to gun them down. I've chosen not to read out the names of the women who were senselessly murdered that day. Instead, I ask that we all take a few moments to contemplate violence against women as a systemic issue. I ask that we commit to elevating the voices, choices, and experiences of women. I ask that we do everything in our power to build a city that works for women. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Awesome.
All right, we're going to begin with presentations, and we begin with 5.1. So Eileen Campbell, Vice President of Customer Service for Electra, to provide the presentation of item 5.1.
I can see it. Good morning.
No, they need to see it.
Yes, I know. Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mayor Eisenberger and City of Hamilton Councilors. Years passed since I was here the last time talking to you about the water and wastewater service activity report, and I appreciate time on your agenda this morning to take a few minutes just to talk about the services that Electra provides to the City of Hamilton. So many of you probably know the story of Electra. More than a year ago, so actually in February of 2017, four like-minded utilities came together to form Electra to champion positive change for the customers and the communities that we serve. At Electra, we are focused on creating long-term value for customers by finding efficiencies, reducing costs, and providing superior reliable service to the customers that we serve. Our service territory now spreads across 1,800 square kilometers. It goes from Penetanguishing down to St. Catherine's, and we are, we serve 15 communities. Of course, Hamilton is one of our shareholders and one of the communities that we serve. Our mission is to be the energy ally that customers expect us to be. We are equipped to help our customers discover the possibilities that energy conservation and new technologies can have on enhancing their lives to nearly more than 1 million customers in the communities that we serve. So our current experience to date, I'm very pleased to say that our customers rated us with a 91% overall customer satisfaction rating for 2018. We have a 99.5% bill accuracy rating, and 78% of our calls are answered within 30 seconds. So we pride ourselves on being accessible to our customers through the channel of their choice. So whether that be through a telephone call, email, online, mobile applications, or IVR through our telephone system, we're available to our customers 724, regardless if it's an outage issue, a billing issue, some type of concern, consumption, or conservation information. So just a few of the highlights from the service activity report. In mid-2017, we implemented monthly billing. So we were on, prior, we were on a bimonthly cycle, and monthly billing started in June. It's been very well received by our customers and your customers. Basically, it provides the customers with a smaller, more affordable bill, a quicker line of sight on how they're using their usage, so particularly in the hot summer months with watering of lawns. It gives them a line of sight to what those bills look like. And it also, it provides... Thank you. So monthly billing has provided our customers with the ability to, we're hearing, the ability to budget better and to understand their consumption patterns and their usages. So I've given you a comparison here between 2016 and 2018, because 2017 was really a transition year. We had half a year on bimonthly billing and half a year on monthly billing. So in 2018, we issued just over 1.8 million invoices. And one maybe item of note is the increase in the transfer of arrears to taxes. Two things are happening there. One, monthly billing, and the other is there was a change to the city's arrears policy whereby unpaid water bills are now transferred to the taxes at 60 days, so instead of 90 days. So we've implemented with the city staff a more robust communication around water arrears and multiple notifications in multiple channels to notify landlords or owners when water's unpaid by tenants before they do go to taxes. And, but you will, there is an increase in the number that are going to taxes because of those two, those two items. So we work in a continuous improvement mode, and some of the highlights just that have taken place in 2018 are, there was a change now, residential properties are now billed to the owner versus the tenant, so the owner doesn't receive those surprises when the tenant doesn't pay the bill. They have control over those bills, and they can manage them as they go along. We have a, or customers have a reporting requirement, large customers, so we're helping customers with data and information regarding energy and water benchmarking, and also the consecutive estimate program. So I've talked about this many times in the past. In order to provide a customer with a timely, accurate bill, we need to read the meter. So it has been a focus to get meter reads on a regular basis and to break down or to reduce the number of estimated accounts. So that, again, has been a focus for 2018 as well. We've also built awareness with, through our website and through notifications to customers around the Home Dialysis Grant. This is a grant that offers customers that take advantage of home dialysis with funds to help them with the additional cost, either electricity or water. And in our October bill, we included your fifth annual newsletter, which gave customers information on not only the service line warranty program, but also how to prevent leaks, frozen pipes, and an update on the Woodward Wastewater Plant Project. So what's next? So we've been going through a significant amount of transition at Electra. Coming together in 2017, this is now the end of 2018, and last year I talked about we were implementing our new billing system, our new CIS system. It's an Oracle system. It's the leading-edge technology in billing. It's been up and running in our Vaughan area service territory since January. And just as, just a note, we, we do bill water and wastewater services for the City of Vaughan and Markham. We've now also implemented our legacy EnerSource, our Mississauga customers onto that system, and our Brampton customers. So we have 750,000 customers on our new billing system. It's gone very well, knock on wood. These things, these large technology projects can have some challenges, but it's been fairly seamless to customers. The one thing that I do want to highlight is we're going, the Horizon, the Horizon, old, Electra. The Hamilton customers, can't get Horizon out of my head, the Electra customers will be going onto the new platform in Q1, and the customers will see a change to their account number. They will have some new services. Our online portal and our web services have been updated. They have a fresh new look. They're easy to access, and the bills also have a bit of a new look. So we're streamlining our bills so that it's easier to read, easier to understand. We've implemented online notifications, so alert notifications for high bills. And in post-2019, after we get through our transition and the convergence of these systems, we're going to be going into an enhancement phase, and we're going to be revamping the bills completely. So I don't know whether, some of you may have seen the new Hydro One bill with the graphs and the charts and the dials, looks very good. We're going to be going to more of a pictorial bill as well, but we'll, you won't see that until about 2020. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the water and wastewater activity report. And just of note, the city staff and Electra staff continue to work very well together collaboratively, collaboratively, to ensure that we're adding value and that we're providing customer service excellence to your customers. So it's a privilege to serve your customers, and thank you for your time this morning.
Right, thank you, Eileen, and congratulations to everyone on the Electricity Distributors Association Communications Excellence Award you received back in March for municipal and stakeholder outreach. I don't know if you had that on your first slide, because I missed your first slide, but...
I did not, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, first up, Counselor Judy Partridge.
Thank you, Chair, and Eileen, welcome. Always good to get this update and presentation. So I'm hearing that things are successfully moving forward, not a lot of kinks.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. We've been, things have moved forward very well. It's been, in the world of billing implementation, it's been extremely successful and seamless to customers. We've had a couple of minor issues, but most of them have been process issues, not customer-facing issues.
Okay, and that's good news to hear. I was curious, when you talked about the changes that are coming up with the, with the billings, you mentioned that the account numbers will be changing. How will that be communicated?
So through you, Mr. Chair. So we have been doing ongoing communications to our customers, so this is just an example of what's going out in the bills. And also, through the municipalities, we've been sending out our Ally Report, which talks about our customer communication, but it's a multi-step approach to communicating with customers. The good news is the customers don't need to take an action. It will be behind the scenes. When they, if they pay through online banking, the bank will automatically update that account number to them. So once they receive their first bill, it'll be a switch, but we are using multiple communication channels to communicate this change.
And that's good news, because that usually causes some consternation, and particularly with our more senior folks. So for those who aren't online.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So for those who aren't online, they'll receive their new bill. It'll have their new account number on it. If they take it to the bank to pay it, the bank will input that for them, and away they go, or they'll mail us in a check, and we'll process it to the new account number. The system has a reference to the old account number as well, so if something comes through to the old account number or the new account number, they are cross-referenced.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I would be remiss if I didn't ask the question that I've been asking for the last eight years. What about Hydro One, and what about the boundaries of the City of Hamilton? For the newer councilors, Electra looks after the sections of the downtown and Water Down, but outside of that, it is Hydro One that services the more rural areas, and that has been problematic over the years. So one of the things that I'm particularly interested in, and I think some others are as well, is the possibility of expanding and acquiring locations of Hydro One that are within the City of Hamilton municipal limits.
So through you, Mr. Chair. We continue to advance conversations as we always have. We are, at Electra, very interested in serving the customers in those areas. Yes, it has caused confusion and a number of issues, particularly when there's outages, and it's, who's, who's, who's off? Is it, is it the Electra service territory, or is it the Hydro One service territory? And I believe Max Kinanzi is coming in to speak to council with the update for the year and to talk about what's happened with the merger. So I will give him a heads up that that question is coming, and maybe, maybe as we progress, we'll have some more news that we can tell you.
I'm sure, I'm sure Max already knows he's going to get that question when he comes in, but thank you very much. I do, I do appreciate that, and, you know, with the new provincial government, Mr. Chair, perhaps that conversation will move forward a little faster. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, good morning, Eileen, and welcome back. When you did your presentation, I didn't see anything about what, if any, changes you're going to make in your, in doing our billing for us. We are doing the water wastewater budget today, and I suspect that's part of our water wastewater bill. So can you tell me what, if any, increase or reduction in charges to the city for doing our billing will be, you'll be presenting to us?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we are still in the term of the existing contract, so there is a new, so the contract, the existing terms of the contract that we have with you now goes until the end of 2019. So as far as costing, that is laid out in the existing terms. We are looking at what the go-forward plan is. We've been in discussions with city staff on the post of this, of this contract, so, but I'm not, I don't have anything to present to you on that today. I'm not sure whether city staff has anything to present to you on that.
Ryan would like to respond.
Okay. Yes, yeah, through the chair. So the, the budget that's being presented in a few minutes has an increase of $140,000 over the, over the 2018 budget, and that's an impact related to inflation and half of the postage increases that occur.
Because I see it's $5.7 million is the projected cost for 2019, but it doesn't, I don't get a feel for what that increase is. So you're saying it's 100 and, or 200, what was the number?
Yeah, so through the chair, 140,000, a two and a half...
What's that as a percentage?
Two and a half percent increase.
Half a percent?
Two and a half percent increase.
It's above our guideline, then, but it's something that was locked in a long-term contract, is that correct?
Yeah, so through the chair, it's, yeah, it's related to the, the way the agreement is written. So like, yeah, half, it's an inflationary increase, and then plus 50% of the postage increase.
Okay.
Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and through you, many thanks for the presentation. And since this is our first committee meeting, and we have a number of new members, I think from my, from our perspective, from an advocacy standpoint, what, over the years, I've been faced with and frustration, is having to deal with calls coming in about those that I have arrears, and the limited amount of influence we have in overcoming that. So if you could just perhaps, as a matter of courtesy, explain, and I understand the business case for it, but there is a compassionate aspect as well that I think everybody needs to, to wrap their minds around. If you can just expand upon the process of which, when the complainant comes in, what that presenting problem is, and, and how you would go about dealing with it accordingly.
Through you, Mr. Chair, certainly. So a lot of changes have happened over the year with respect to how we collect arrears on account. So a couple of things that I've talked about, we've gone to monthly billing, which provides a smaller, more affordable bill for the customer. We also have changed some of our payment plans to be more flexible, so the extensions for customers who find themselves that they just can't pay the full bill, maybe paying half of the bill and paying half of the bill at the end of the month. We also have our low-income energy assistance program, which allows customers to split the bill. If they have a large bill, they've maybe got themselves, maybe there's some arrears that have accumulated over a number of time. They can also split those arrears over four, six, eight, or 10 months, and then continue to keep their current account current. We've eliminated the need for residential security deposits, which I know is a barrier for customers. We released $4 million back into the community from those security deposits that we no longer require to hold on file. And maybe lastly, just around the electricity, is we are in a disconnection ban, so we do not disconnect electricity between November and May. So during that time, we do work with customers to keep them informed that if they're not paying their bills, the arrears are still mounting, but we work with them through flexible payment terms.
I think it's important to note how much has been accomplished along, along those lines in mitigating the impact to the customer. And I know over and above that, the City of Hamilton has an essential services bylaw that we initiated. Perhaps you can expand, expand upon that as well.
So through you, Mr. Chair. So our staff work with the City of Hamilton, and if there's a bulk metered premise that tenants are living in the premise, but the owner is paying the account, we would notify the City of Hamilton that the account was in arrears, it was up for disconnection. We would try to work with the owner to work through payments, but typically, and typically we do get that resolved before we would do any type of disconnection, but then otherwise the city would take, take into consideration the account, and then the tenants would still keep their power.
Okay. And lastly, I was wondering if perhaps we could, in isolation, have something sent to us, particularly the new members, of this particular item and all those issues you just highlighted, I think it'd be helpful, even for those returning, to use as a, as a guide on how to, how to advocate on behalf of their residents on that particular issue. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Counselor Dankel.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just one quick question and a comment. Got to be closer. In the appendancy, I noticed there's a percentage of pre-authorized payments. In 2014, it was 40%, and that drops down to 26% for 2018. Is there a particular reason for that, or is there a, a plan to increase those pre-authorized payment accounts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We are constantly looking to have customers take advantage of our, our electronic options, so whether that be electronic billing or pre-authorized billing, so on and so forth. We did have some shift in the pre-authorized payment protocols. Customers are taking advantage of online payments, so they're still paying us electronically, but they're paying it through their own services. So we have seen a little bit of shift there, and I think some of that does come from mobile applications and easier applications to be able to use that, but we do continue to, to educate and to promote these, our pre-authorized payment plan.
Excellent. And then just, secondly, I just want to echo Counselor Partridge's point there about Hydro One. Very encouraged to hear that Electra is actively pursuing taking over those areas. I think that would be a very positive thing for the city.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you, and I think the other area that we haven't really focused on, unfortunately, I think it's a legislative issue, is the transformers that Hydro One have located in the City of Hamilton. I know that the West Mountain has had a series of brownouts and blackouts, or probably higher than the average, based on issues with the transformers, and, and then what happens is they ship their, their maintenance people in from Toronto, wherever they are, you've got to wait that period of time, and, and sometimes they're working on one, so they have redundancy in all those transformer systems, as you know, and I've had incidents where they're working on one, the other one goes down, so they have no backup. And so for an indeterminate amount of time, residents are without hydro, and then obviously you go to Electra, like most people do, to think that's an issue with Electra, and the communication piece is a little bit weak in whose actual responsibility it is. So first thing is everyone's pointing the fingers at the wrong people and calling the wrong person. So the first question is, is there a way that we can address those breakdowns in a more prudent way to ensure that the residents that are impacted by these outages know exactly who would be, who they should be calling?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So load transfers, and yes, it is a regulatory and legislative issue that we've been dealing with for many, many years. We are looking to move these load transfers so that the service territories are supplying within their own areas. It's a long-term project. These transformers have long lives, and as new infrastructure and new build is coming online, we are addressing some of these issues. I know particularly in the Hamilton West Mountain, it has been a very big challenge. We are looking to see how we can perhaps increase the robustness of our communication so that customers understand what's happening for us. This comes in as a loss of supply and a loss of power, but sometimes we don't know about it until that first customer calls us as well. So then, we, we do then put information on our website, and we put information through our telephone system, but I take your point. It is extremely challenging, no doubt about it. We did have our reliability statistics, including these loss of power, were around 55 minutes per customer, residential customer, for the year, for 2018, which is, we target around anywhere between 45 and 65 minutes of outages. So we're right sort of within that band. We are making infrastructure investments in Electra service territory of $250 million to harden our system, to increase reliability, but we continue to work on that load transfer issue.
I appreciate it. It's certainly noticeable when you're washing the gray cup and you have no hydro for four hours. So the issue, the issue is that the councilor gets a lot of calls from the residents because they just don't know where to go. And like I said, it seems to be fairly frequent. You could have four or five episodes in a year, which I think is high for any community. So hopefully we can fix the communications piece. The other question, I, I, I need to get clarification on, because I know we've got this shared responsibility with Electra on our, you know, we're going to be discussing the rates, water rates and so forth. Who actually reads, and what is the, the actual physical aspect of reading the actual hydro rates from home by home? What is, what does that look like?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, reading the actual, I'm not, I'm maybe not clear on what you're asking.
So who does the reading of the meters?
Oh, through you, Mr. Chair. So the reading of the meters is, we're, we're accountable through the contract to do the meter reading. We actually contract that to a service proprietor that we've had a long-term relationship with, we've had a 20-year relationship with, to read the meters, but we are accountable for reading the meters within the contract.
Now, are, is there, columns of scale, are the same people reading those meters, are they also reading the water rates?
Through you, Mr. Chair, reading the, sorry, the, they're reading, so the electric meters, maybe to clarify, maybe it wasn't very clear there, the electric meters are electronic, so we have smart meters, time of use, they're read through a head-end system, the data's collected. The actual water meters are, we send people to the locations, there's either a touchpad or they're reading the meter at the location, at the physical location.
So what percentage of homeowners are on the smart meters, and how many are you still physically reading?
Or the electricity, we have 99.99%. I think we have something like 101 meters that are, are not changed out to electronic meters.
Would you say they're electronically, you're reading it from an office, or you're still going into the vicinity and reading it from the road?
We read it from the office.
From the office.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, I guess, two questions. One, could we establish some type of protocol where councilors are notified when there are power outages in our wards and what the reason for that is? And two, does Electra actually track the power outages, and could they give us an indication of the number of power outages in different neighborhoods?
Andy Lyles. Yes, Eileen, those two questions, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair. So, notifications for outages, we do, most of our notifications are electronic through social media needs, and pardon me, through social media means. So, if you follow Electra News, you will get every notification of every outage. As far as individual outages based on your constituency, unfortunately, our back office system is just not there yet to do that. We do have notices going to our very large customers, to facilities, down to the residential level, though we are relying on that tweet, or the social media, or the push from our website. And your second question around, yes, we do track reliability. Absolutely, we do. And if there's an interest to understand the minutes within your area, we could certainly provide that to you as well.
Thank you. Good question. So, you would recommend on the first question, counsel follow you on Twitter?
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely. Follow Electra News, and you will receive all of those notifications.
Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Aileen, for that answer. But I'm just touching on to Counselor Clark's question, as I raised it yesterday at our social media workshop. I raise that concern that we're not receiving the notices when there are power outages in the areas. We did get them before, so I'm not sure, and I don't have Twitter. I'm not on that. And I don't know that all residents are. So, it does present a problem as a board counselor when I'm getting the calls. And I think there was one event in 2016, 2017, actually, where, you know, I was on the phone on hold for an hour and a half. I can understand the frustration for residents. And it was a unique situation where I had power, but everybody around me had no power. So, I was being inundated by emails and calls. And I'm just wondering, why is it that we can't have something come to us by email? We used to have that. I think it was Marjorie used to do it when it was Horizon. We used to get automatic, just messages of what, you know, the power's out, and they're working on it, timelines of when they anticipate repairs and service being back up and operation. So, could you maybe answer that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. And yes, I remember that event very well. I remember speaking to you, and you were speaking to our staff about that. So, the notifications that you received by email, a lot of them would have came from myself or from Shelley Parker. And they were really around big events. They weren't the, they weren't outages that were, you know, there was maybe a pole hit, and we'd have it back up and running in an hour or whatnot. If it was going to be a prolonged outage, and typically, we looked at anything over eight hours, six to eight hours, and/or if you received a call and you contacted us, then we would send you updates. So, we try to be as proactive as we can with notifications. I will take this back, maybe through all of the transition that we've been doing. Maybe we have slipped a little bit on this. But for extraordinary events, or those large outages, or prolonged outages, you should still be receiving some information from us on those.
And I appreciate you taking it back. And if it can be by, I mean, even a phone message, but some way that we can have a communication back and forth that's not on Twitter. For me, the laptop's the best, and then we can keep apprised, and I can at least say, no, I've got it right here. When a resident calls me, I've got it right here. This is what's happening. And I will ask one other, just one other point is, and certainly what Counselor Whitehead raised with regards to Hydro One servicing. We do have an issue, and I know I've talked to staff at Electra. There is an issue with the substation. I believe it's a substation. It's called the Lake Avenue Substation, east of Centennial Parkway. And I'm just wondering, do we have any idea of the timelines? Because I believe this substation services all of east end of Stony Creek. I've received many concerns through the election of servicing issues in the Winona area. So, is there something that'd be taken back to them? And I know it's a cost issue. It's not cheap. And I understand that there's, if not partial, probably a full replacement that's required there?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have done a significant amount of work in that area to try to bring the reliability up to the standard that the customers are expecting. As far as the lake substation, I'll take that back, and I will link back with you on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor, acting city manager, Ms. Barrett.
So, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just with respect to the dissemination of information, we'll coordinate with corporate communications with Electra a protocol as it relates to the dissemination, whether it's on disruptions or other relevant updates with Electra. So, we'll take that offline, and we will provide counsel and update what that protocol is.
Wonderful. Thank you. Move to receive. Moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Partridge. Thank you, Aileen. Congratulations. I said your award, but it was Electra's award in March, so I just want to get that clear and on the record. All of you, including yourself, well deserved. All right. Motion to then receive the report attached to item 5.1 is moved by Counselor Whitehead, seconded by our mayor, Mayor Fred Eisenberger. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. And on 5.2, we have two presentations. We're starting with our Director of Water, Andrew Greis.
Lots of pictures. No, lots of pictures. I love pictures. Have you wave it?
Kirk Paparilla's just reminded me with the new bylaw executed near the end of this term, last term. You don't have to yell out Carrie, you just raise your hand. Those returning counselors, you know, as chair, I'm pretty lenient. So, if I hear Carrie and hand raising together, that's fine. Raise your hands, please.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of committee. It's my pleasure to kick off the rate budget presentation. As always, this is a joint effort between Hamilton Water and our corporate finance team. So, you're going to hear from me first, and then Brian will go over the financial details. We do have our Hamilton Water management team in the audience today, as well as those staff enrolled in our current development program. So, lots of staff here to answer any questions that you may have. And just before I jump in, I want to thank Hector Quintero in my office. He's the one who put together today's budget presentation. I think he did a pretty good job. Just a quick overview of what we're going to cover today. I'm going to look at 2018 in review, look at where we're going in 2019 and beyond, and then finish up my part of the presentation with our budget drivers and our staffing resources. We put these slides together last year for council. It's really a snapshot into the services that we provide. There's one for water, and there's one for wastewater. In total, Hamilton Water owns and operates over $10 billion worth of infrastructure. And on the water side, that comprises of 21 pumping stations, a number of other facilities, as well as over 2,000 kilometers' worth of water main. In addition, we perform more than 28,000 tests on our drinking water. So, that's more than 75 tests per day, which is certainly very important to ensure water quality. On the wastewater front, something that people may not always remember is that we also provide a lot of value-added services in terms of cost recovery and revenue generation. We have close to 70 active sewer discharge permits with our industrial and commercial establishments for the treatment of their wastewater. This represents about $7 million annually. And we're also very fortunate to have a laboratory, an accredited laboratory. Most municipalities do not. So, in addition to providing great service to us, it also allows us to run laboratory analysis for other municipalities, and that's a revenue generator for us. Looking more specifically at our key facilities in a little bit more detail and the performance of them. At the Woodward Wastewater Treatment Plant, we're forecasting flows to be on par with our five-year average, and that puts our plant capacity at approximately 76%. The Woodward facility has a very proactive renewable energy program. So, our 1.6 megawatt cogeneration plant converts methane gas, which is a product of wastewater or byproduct of wastewater, into heat and electricity. In 2018, that was actually offline for an extended period of time to facilitate some capital upgrades. But we pushed more product through our biogas purification unit, which converts that methane gas into renewable natural gas. So, I think the city was very innovative in putting in kind of a dual stream there, and that certainly became very beneficial in 2018, so we can continue to make revenues. At the Dundas Plant, again, flows are on par with the five-year average. We are celebrating 45 months of continuous compliance at this facility. That's a real accomplishment. The regulatory requirements at the Dundas Plant and the daily reporting is really strict, so celebrating 45 months is certainly a very strong accomplishment for our staff. At the Water Plant, production numbers are on par with our five-year average. And right now, we're forecasting year-to-date global adjustment to be in the range of $3.5 million. For maybe some of the new counselors that aren't familiar with that, the global adjustment relates to our energy consumption and our ability to offset our electrical growth during peak days and free up other capacity on the grid. Jumping into some highlights for 2018, where applicable, we try to align our highlights to our corporate priorities. And there is a lot of information on the following slides. I wasn't planning on walking through each and every bullet, but certainly, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to try and answer them for you. So, we often speak about how regulated the water industry is. And in 2018, an external auditor audited our drinking water quality management system. They found zero nonconformances and zero opportunities for improvement. So, that gives some level of comfort to our counselors as the owners of our drinking water system. In 2018, we also worked with our other colleagues in Public Works to install the first, our first low-impact development rain garden in the Wright of Way. That's located in War Two, just outside of Bayfront Park. In addition to acting as a stormwater feature, it also is a traffic calming measure. So, it's serving dual purpose there. It is early days. We're still evaluating its performance, but so far, things seem to be going very well. And very recently, on November 19th, we celebrated the first annual World Toilet Day. The event was a major success. We raised close to $12,000 to support Water for People in the global sanitation crisis that sees 4.5 billion people worldwide that do not have access to proper sanitation services. Couple other highlights. So, there's a lot of transition in Hamilton Water in 2018. With Dan's move to the general manager's office, I have now been in my position for approximately one year. And we also recruited a number of other key positions within our team. We also completed some minor restructurings within our group, all based on the principle to better align our teams to provide the best service possible. In the middle of 2017, we received the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund funding from the provincial and federal government that resulted in $32 million to deliver some of our capital programs. And in 2018, we delivered a number of projects, our new corrosion control facility, a bunch of water and sewer main projects. And then probably most notable is the rehabilitation of our methane sphere. Certainly very visible, and certainly draw a lot of media attention. Our engineering team, work very closely with them. They coordinate and run our inspections and lining program. In 2018, they completed an inspection on the Kennelworth Woodward Transmission Main, which is a very critical asset for us. Did find some minor deficiencies, and those are being programmed into our future works. The sewer lining contract continues to be, our sewer lining program continues to be a major success. Over 380 kilometers have been relined since 2001. And it's not always applicable, but where we can line, it provides great value. Had those 380 kilometers been replaced in traditional open construction, it would have cost approximately $200 million more over that lifespan. So, certainly a good news story as well. I did want to pull out a couple of our projects from 2018 that were a little bit more high-profile. And the first one would be our corrosion control program. So, I did provide a full, kind of wholesome overview of the corrosion control program at the last Public Works meeting before election break. Recognizing there's a lot of new counselors in the audience today, we'll walk through very quickly some of the history. So, in 2009, Health Canada changed the guidelines to focus on lead concentrations at the tap versus within our distribution system. Hamilton's results necessitated a corrosion control program, which really was no surprise, given the age of our city and infrastructure. We have about 20,000 lead services in the City of Hamilton. In addition, older homes may have plumbing fixtures or solder that has lead content. So, in 2016, council approved our corrosion control program, which consisted of an orthophosphate-based program. We put a lot of effort into our outreach and education program. You can see a picture of a video there, some of our advertisements on the bus shelters, as well as a bunch on our website and in various brochures, trying to raise awareness about the harmful effects of lead, but also trying to educate people about our new program. The program went live in November of this year, and so far, everything is going very well. Another program that went live in 2018 is our Flushables Program or Own Your Throne campaign. I'm hoping our three heroes there are somewhat familiar to most of you. We've been doing a lot of advertising the last couple of months. Certainly see pretty good feedback from the community. We have our heroes, and we also have our villains that we're trying to keep out of our system. This program really started a couple of years ago, when the two indigenous women were floating in the harbor, trying to raise awareness about materials that were coming up along our shoreline. At that time, council supported a strategy to develop an outreach campaign, as well as an engineering study. The engineering study will be complete in early 2019, and our outreach campaign just launched earlier this year. We are using a variety of means. And much like Counselor Pearson, I'm not very big on social media, so I'm going to read my, I'm going to read my notes. We're using billboards, bus benches, shelters, on various different social media streams, as well as videos to broadcast our message. We also included this slide last year, because it kind of highlights some of the services that our residents typically would access. So, our Protective Plumbing Program, which is really better known as our Backwater Valve Program, it continues to be very successful following this rostered contractor model. And to date, we've spent close to $23 million on that program since 2009. In 2018, we mimicked this style of a rostered model into our sewer lateral management program, again, to provide better customer service to our residents. We've completed over 750 inspections year-to-date. Our Poor Pressure Program, or better known as our Lead Service Line Replacement Program, continues to be very active. We replaced 670 services this year, and we have an increase in the number of size and type inspections that our staff are completing. We attribute this to all the promotion we've been doing for our corrosion control program, as well as lead awareness. So, we're seeing more interest from our community, which is good. At the end of the day, hopefully, that helps get the lead out. And then a couple of years ago, we started handing out filters to those residents who were replacing their lead service lines during that transitional period while they wait for the public portion to be replaced. And this year, we've handed out close to 630 filters as well. Those are very, kind of, our public-facing services that we see access most of. Looking at our Clean Harbor Program. So, in 2018, and really at the last part of 2017, we tried to put more focus on capturing some video and photography of what we're doing. We're spending close to $350 million on infrastructure, but it's all happening behind a fence. And it's really not something that is visible to anyone in our community. So, our website has lots of great information, but we also put together this quick video to highlight other aspects of the Clean Harbor Program. When we talk Clean Harbor, everyone jumps to what the work we're doing at Woodward. That's really a very important element, but there are more elements to the Clean Harbor Program than just that. So, I did include a quick three-minute video here that kind of highlights the Clean Harbor Program in general. And I'm going to cross my fingers that it works.
By the middle of the 20th century, decades of toxic sediment, stormwater runoff, habitat loss, deterioration of water quality, and other factors have caused severe damage to the Hamilton Harbor ecosystem. Hamilton Harbor, along with 43 other locations around the Great Lakes, were studied and formally identified as areas of concern. By 1992, after extensive community consultation, the Hamilton Harbor Remedial Action Plan was developed.
Our goal with the Clean Harbor Program is to improve water quality and enhance the natural environment. So, the city's been very fortunate over the last number of years to receive various levels of funding to support small and large capital investments. Since 2012, the city has identified and corrected more than 300 sewer lateral cross connections and limiting sand-carry discharge to the natural environment. In addition to that, the city, over the last 30 years, has made significant investments into combined sewer overflow tanks. The city has constructed nine tanks at a total capital investment of $90 million. In 2012, the city completed the Windermere Basin Restoration Project. This restored the Windermere Basin to its former wetland state, and has now become a breeding ground for fish, birds, as well as an avid hotspot for bird watchers. The city is working with various partners to deliver the $140 million Rainbow Reef Project. This project will remove toxic material from Hamilton Harbor that is a result of past industrial practices. Once complete, this project will contain the largest volume of toxic material in the Great Lakes system.
The largest investment of the Clean Harbor Program is a multi-phase plan to upgrade the Woodward Wastewater Treatment Plant. Since the plant is the largest single source of water flowing into Hamilton Harbor, the quality of the effluent has a direct and powerful impact on the harbor's water quality and environmental health. The Woodward Upgrade Project is made up of three focus areas. The new main wastewater pump station, it will have the capacity to process 1,700 million liters of wastewater a day. The benefits include increased overall system storage, reduced solids buildup during dry weather, and helps to mitigate flooding. A new power center is being built to replace aging infrastructure. It will provide consistent and reliable power across the plant, ensuring full operation of the wastewater system, even in extreme weather. of the wastewater system even in extreme weather. Tertiary treatment is the implementation of a new disk filtration system, which will elevate the plant's treatment process to a third level of treatment. This new process will have the greatest impact on the harbor and will allow the plant to reach strict discharge limits described by the Hamilton Harbor Remedial Action Plan for phosphorus, ammonia, and suspended solids. Hamiltonians have made it clear that bringing Hamilton Harbor back to health is a community priority. With the leadership of Hamilton City Council and the contributions of dozens of community stakeholders, the Clean Harbor Program is making powerful contributions to the harbor's recovery.
I hope that provided a little bit more of an overview of all aspects of the Clean Harbor Program and not just the significant upgrades we're making at Woodward. There's lots of great information on our website, encourage you to check it out. And as always, if anyone wants to come down and see any of the work we're doing, I'm always happy to show people around. I included a slide on Randall Reef. I'm not going to talk to it because it was covered in the video, but I wanted you to have the stats in front of you in case you had any questions. I will very quickly talk about the Woodward Upgrade Project, just because it is our flagship project in Hamilton Water. It is a three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar or so upgrade at our facility. Contract one for our main pumping station and contract two for the electrical system are currently under construction and scheduled to be complete in two thousand and twenty-one. And right now, we are just ready to release the construction tender for the contract three, which is our tertiary upgrade. This will be the, or this is the contract that will have the biggest single impact on revitalizing Hamilton Harbor, reduce the amount of solids and phosphorus that we're putting into Hamilton Harbor. So anticipate that this will close early in the new year, and construction will start in kind of end of Q1, early Q2 of two thousand and nineteen. Just a couple pictures to show kind of the magnitude of the work going on there. This is really once-in-a-lifetime construction for most of the staff in Hamilton Water. It's really been a joy to watch it being constructed. So just to shed some light on the size of this, so that picture on the bottom left is the excavation for the new main pumping station. It is about a hundred feet deep and seventy-five feet in diameter, so certainly very large. We just poured the base foundation earlier this fall. Required two-hundred-and-four to concrete trucks, which is over two-thousand cubic meters. It was done over a fourteen-hour continuous period, and we really appreciate all the patience of the residents in Ward Four. I know that was a very active day for vehicular traffic in our site. I'm really trying to work with that community and the councillor to minimize the impacts. If that's not enough going on at Woodward, right smack dab in the middle of all that, we also have our BioSolids Project. The BioSolids Project is being delivered as a public-private partnership with a thirty-year operating agreement to harbor city solutions. At the end of the day, with enhanced drying, we're going to have a Class A, or Class Grade A fertilizer product. In two thousand and eighteen, we received our ECAs for air and noise, and I'm really always surprised at how quickly this project moves along. The demolition was done immediately, and they've already started to make strong progress, starting to erect the new facility. It is on track to be completed in Q1 of two thousand and twenty and transitioned into operations. So certainly a lot of highlights in two thousand and eighteen for Hamilton Water. Certainly had some of our challenges come our way as well, so I'll try and touch on a few of those. We're anticipating a regulatory framework for a wastewater quality management system to come from our regulatory agency at some point in the future, and really hoping to get ahead of the curve, leverage some of the work we've done in our drinking water quality management system and set up the framework so we are ready when that happens. If I look at, we touched briefly about the recruitment and all the transition in Hamilton Water in two thousand and eighteen. With the age of our workforce, I expect we're going to have similar turnover in two thousand and nineteen, and that does create a lot of challenges for us. We do a very good job of bringing in new staff, often young staff. We train them, and they turn out to be absolute superstars for us. But in a very regulated industry like water, it takes a long time to get the appropriate licenses to operate our system. So recruiting experienced operators is quite a challenge for us. Increased staff workload has been a problem over the last couple of years, and I'm assuming that's going to continue into the future. Takes a lot of effort to support the Woodward Upgrade Project from a construction and an operational perspective, as well as we accelerated a bunch of projects to leverage the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund. The city is open for business, and we're seeing a lot of activity in the form of development applications. These are often very complex and take a lot of time to finalize, and it certainly is a drain on our team. The city's Open for Business Strategy has also resulted in accelerating some of our capital projects. Good examples of this are the work we're doing in Bimbrook and Water Down to support a more intensified development strategy. And then very recently, all the news around the airport, certainly if we want to move in that direction, there's going to be a need for some enhancements to our infrastructure in there to handle the needs of that community. Looking a little beyond two thousand and nineteen and into the future, one priority for Hamilton Water remains our non-revenue water, or what we call our water loss. This is a little bit of a bugaboo for me, and I've been pushing our team hard, and they're making some good traction, but this is really a long-term plan. The Woodward Drinking Water System, water loss sits at about twenty-five percent. Best practice is about fifteen percent. If you look at production costs, that represents close to two million dollars of waste annually. So there's big opportunities for us here. It's not a very quick fix. It is going to take us time, but our team is actively working on that, and we'll continue to update committee and council in the future. Low-impact development, we talked about the rain garden we installed, and that's really an evolving technology, and it may change the way we operate our system to capture more stormwater on-site. That will certainly have an impact for us and our own city infrastructure. Where I see more of the challenges is when we're using LIDs to approve future development, and how do you ensure that those LID features are functioning five, ten years down the road, to not have any negative impacts on downstream users? Regulatory changes always present challenges for us. It could be in one form or another. I know in two thousand and nineteen, they're looking at the lead limits, so that could certainly have an impact and require us to tweak our corrosion control program. Certainly not going to need to start over, but it may require some small adjustments on our end. Climate change is always a big issue. Any natural event you can think of pretty much has a big impact on Hamilton Water in some form or another, whether it's rainfall, elevated lake levels, or all the frozen services we went through a number of years ago. Another challenge we're seeing is at Dundas, the Dundas Wastewater Treatment Plant. So we talk a lot about Woodward, but we also have a smaller wastewater treatment plant in Dundas. It is scheduled for upgrades, but we're looking at a like-for-like replacement, and that is what's forecasted in our long-term budget. In two thousand and seventeen, the Hamilton Harbor Remedial Action Plan redefined the effluent targets for this site, and we're going to need to look at different technology if we want to meet those targets. We're very optimistic we can get funding for this, but we have not heard any formal release of the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund Phase Two, so it may adjust our timing a little bit. So something that we're going to keep our eye on for the future. Moving into where we are going in two thousand and nineteen, I would like us to maybe dust off a stormwater rate review, and I'll say that somewhat quietly, but I think it time has come where we should be looking at that again. It was initially presented in two thousand and nine, when stormwater rates in Ontario were really in their infancy. There's been a lot of traction from other municipalities now, so there's a lot of great models out there that we can learn from. Dundas is celebrating one-hundred years in operation under Wastewater Treatment Plant. That was a little bit of a surprise to me, but it's certainly a great accomplishment. Timing looks pretty good for us. If we're going to look for funding, we can kind of put together a hundred-year anniversary and hopefully put some promotion towards that and get some funding, which is certainly good news for us. And then looking more strategically, we're finalizing our Flooding and Drainage Master Servicing Study that will be done in two thousand and nineteen, and that is a look at our combined sewer network and its drainage, and we'll come up with a level of service as well as some long-term capital plans to meet those. This is more of a strategic initiative, as it is looking at where we need to go through a climate change lens. Again, looking a little beyond next year and into the future, a lot of things are going to revolve around us transitioning large capital into operation. So Woodward's going to be done, the BioSolids Project's going to be done, and now we have to take those into operation. From a capital standpoint, we're making some pretty significant investments in our water treatment plant. Right now, we're in the middle of, much like Woodward, it's split up into smaller bite-sized contracts, and we're in the middle of contract one right now. It's scheduled to be done in two thousand and twenty, and in total, we're spending close to a hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars on our water treatment plant over approximately the next ten years. That may stretch out a little bit beyond the ten-year window, but certainly a pretty significant investment in the future. From an operational perspective, we're looking to expand our automated metering infrastructure. So we did a pilot in Carlisle this year as part of the Carlisle Conservation Committee. Worked very well. And when the lecture was up here, we were talking about, you know, do we have to send people physically to the device to read it? So we're not doing that right now in Carlisle because of the pilot we've done. Really hoping to use the information we got here to develop a business case so that we can maybe expand this, hopefully, citywide eventually, but we're going to look at starting with our industrial and commercial sector, because those are really our biggest users. And then finally, on this slide, we're also looking at developing a facility plan for Woodward. So there's a lot of work going on at Woodward, and we're certainly seeing a lot of new assets created and rehabilitation there, but it is not touching all of our process areas. So we're kind of looking at it strategically and prioritizing where we need to spend money in the future, so that we are ready once the Woodward Program is complete. Continuous improvement is a city priority, but it really started in Hamilton Water under the leadership of Dan McKinnon. And now it's become a city priority, and we are pushing forward. Hamilton Water continues to push forward in this regard, and I'll highlight one project that we did this year. So I'll talk about our bulk fill station. So the city of Hamilton has two bulk water filling stations. This is for water haulers to go fill up their trucks, and they can provide service to our rural communities. Just due to the age of the infrastructure there, they had to come into Three Thirty Wentworth, our office, to purchase tickets so that they could get the water. We upgraded that infrastructure in two thousand and eighteen. Now they can do that online. So it's providing twenty-four-seven service, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five service, and it's been received very well. Eighty-five percent of our interactions are now taking place online, which is great. It's freeing up our resources to focus on other valuable work. A lot of these things, they're not rocket science, but they're really changing the way that we do business with our residents and our customers, trying to make things more streamlined and efficient. I am going to walk through this one a little more detail, because this is, I call, our flagship process improvement project for two thousand and eighteen. This was a joint effort between Hamilton Water and our Office of Energy Initiatives. And this involves the installation of anti-stagnation valves within our distribution system. So historically, level valves are left open to promote water movement throughout the system to avoid poor water quality in our distribution system. In two thousand and eighteen, we installed thirty-seven anti-stagnation valves along the boundary of two pressure districts, and now they open at set points throughout the day rather than twenty-four-seven. The energy savings associated with this are really quite significant. So for a ninety-thousand-dollar capital investment, we're saving two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars annually on energy consumption. So again, this isn't an overly complicated solution, but it certainly has a big benefit to our pocketbook. This team's looking to expand this in two thousand and nineteen to other areas. It's not a solution that works absolutely everywhere, but where applicable, we certainly want to look to move in this direction. There is definitely a business case to do so. So the next couple of slides are going to focus on the state of the infrastructure. And this is really stemming from a conversation we had last year during my presentation. Councillor Marula asked me if the investment we're making is sustainable for the future, and I kind of responded with, I don't believe so at the current time, but we're trending in the right direction. So I hope this couple of slides paints a little bit of a picture of where I see us right now. So this graph right here, or this chart, is showing the age of the water mains within the city of Hamilton. The red bars represent our transmission mains, so those are our large diameter water mains that go from our water treatment plant out to our critical stations. And the blue bars represent our smaller diameter water mains, and those would include the pipes you see within, you know, the general load allowances that are ultimately providing water to the residents of the city of Hamilton. Although the red bars, the transmission mains, only represent a small portion of our overall network, they carry a much greater risk than our local system. And two things stand out for me on this chart. One is that if you look at our large diameter water mains, our critical assets, thirty-five percent of them are close to seventy years or older. That is getting certainly quite old, and there's going to be a portion of those in the middle bar there, thirty-eight percent, that are leaning, you know, more towards the older age. That's the kind of stuff that scares me a little bit and keeps me up at night. The other thing I noticed on this slide is that a lot of our smaller diameter water mains are new, and that certainly makes sense from a couple of aspects. The city's continued to grow year over year, so we have to get new water mains to service expansions in Water Down and Bimbrook, but also because of our Coordinated Roads Program. So at its core, a coordinated road strategy is very smart, is maximizing our investment. But what we find is that our roads condition sometimes prioritize where we're investing in our infrastructure. So sometimes we may not be hitting the highest priority water main. All that being said, to be completely open and transparent, water main age is not the only factor that you look at for condition of a pipe, materials of construction, depth of bary, the bedding and the compaction rate, there's all kinds of things that go into this, but our big infrastructure is certainly getting quite old. Our engineering team and Mike did a really good job putting together this following map, so I'm going to click it. It's going to populate with kind of the age of our infrastructure, and you'll see it kind of populate throughout the city. We chose to stop kind of at nineteen fifty, but certainly if we were to keep going, you'd see more and more. But I think when I see that populate in front of me, it certainly shows that we have a lot of infrastructure that is quite old. So we talked about things being older than seventy, but, you know, a lot of things have populated here that are pre-nineteen fifty as well. So we have a lot of old infrastructure in the city. If you look at it on a broader scale, there's a little bit more information. Couple councillors had asked if we had this information available. We can certainly clean it up. I think the color scheme might be a little confusing to understand, but we'd be happy to kind of clean it up and provide maybe more war-by-war specific information if you think it is valuable to you. Really trying to paint a picture that our infrastructure is getting quite old. So if you layer on top of that, we talked about linear infrastructure. On this slide, we're layering on our investments and our vertical infrastructure. So that would be our pumping stations and our facilities. Generally speaking, we're making more investment in our linear infrastructure than we are in our facilities. And I told you that the red bars, our transmission mains, carry a greater risk than our small diameter water mains. Our stations carry a greater risk than our large diameter water mains. So we're certainly looking to trend in the right direction here, but we're still a little bit below the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card guidelines. Again, those are just guidelines, but that's kind of industry best practice and where we should be. And when we are not making the investments in our system, our reactive maintenance is very expensive. I've just highlighted four water main breaks here that we addressed in two thousand and eighteen, and they total close to six-hundred-thousand dollars. So certainly some pretty significant repairs. They also create a lot of traffic and headaches for our residents, so certainly not a good news story. Not all water main breaks are costly from a city perspective, but they still have major consequences for our residents. The pictures on the right are of a recent break on Mohawk that caused major traffic disruptions. The picture in the upper middle is of a water main, a leak on a water main that goes under the four-oh-three in Ancaster. Initial review, looks like that's going to be a prime candidate for relining, which is good news, but if it wasn't, we would certainly have a pretty significant challenge on our hands. And then probably our most prominent break of two thousand and eighteen is the one that occurred just outside of Woodward in October of this year. That was a pretty significant water main break. It did happen within an easement, so, you know, restoration from our perspective really wasn't that costly, but it flooded sixty-five homes, and some of them quite, some of them received major flooding. I was standing in that corridor the night of the break, watching a wave of water rush into that person's home. That is not a very nice thing to watch, and it's certainly one of the worst things as a homeowner that you can experience. Maybe after a fire, I think that's probably one of the next worst things that a resident can go through. This particular break does relate to the age of our infrastructure. So during the repair, I don't know if you can quite see it on there, but that infrastructure is from eighteen eighty. So certainly quite old. Again, age of a pipe is not the only indicator to the condition of a pipe, but generally speaking, our infrastructure is getting quite old. So I hope that kind of made sense. I tried to walk through where I see some of our challenges in our infrastructure. I'm happy to try and answer any questions there when we move on. And then the last part of my presentation is just going to talk a little bit about some of our drivers and our staffing requests. This is our org chart, wasn't planning on walking through it, but it's there, so you can see kind of the different services we provide and who you need to contact should you have any questions. So our rate drivers this year, we are seeing a decrease in our hydro. That's really following the corporate guidelines, but that's also baking in the fact that with that anti-stagnation valve project, we're using less energy within our distribution systems. We're actually seeing a decrease in what we were putting forward for energy. We've reduced our protective plumbing programs of the backwater valves, and that's certainly not to say we're not going to install backwater valves or as many backwater valves, but under that new rostered model, we've now had two years to evaluate the spending patterns, and now we're putting in alignment with where we have seen spending in the last two seasons. Responding to council's discussion, we had a council last year with our positive variance on the rate budget. We've taken a good look at our line items, and we've made some reductions in some of some reductions in some of our accounts where we were building in some money to deal with what would I classify as emergency situations. I think we got a little shell shocked with winter 2014 and 2015, and we started to inflate our budgets because we thought that that may be the new norm. We've since kind of pulled those back out, realizing that that's really not proper accounting principles. Hopefully we can deal with that. Hopefully we have a great winter, first of all. And if not, hopefully we can deal with it within our existing resources, and if not, that's the type of event that we really should be coming back and asking for access to the reserves. So those are changes that we have made, and really I'm trying to make the point on this slide that the capital, our rate increase is largely driven by capital. Our small O operating, so our contractual services and staffing requests, we're actually coming in at a small negative this year. Really, capital is all driving it, trying to improve and move the needle on the state of our infrastructure. In addition to that, we also have some impacts from growth. So the city's open for business strategy is awesome. I love watching the city revitalize and expand, but along with that, new infrastructure is added. It's kilometers of pipe, it's hydrants, it's valves in our system year over year, and often the initial investment is covered through development charges, but there is ongoing maintenance for the life of that asset. To dive a little bit deeper, since 2011, the number of valves in our system has increased from 20,000 to 22,000, or over 22,000. So approximately 2,000 additional valves. To ensure they function in times of need, we exercise those valves once every three years throughout our entire system. An operator can exercise approximately 15 valves a day, so those 2,000 new valves represent two months' worth of work that's been added to our portfolio. And that's just, you know, that's just valves. There's lots of other pieces of infrastructure that we inherit every day. And it's not always growth. Regulatory changes can also impact our strategy and our budget moving forward. We just completed our new corrosion control facility. That is a new asset that we've never had before, so chemical costs, power costs, the maintenance of that facility are not things that were ever in our budget in previous years. As the city continues to grow, there certainly is an operating impact for Hamilton Water, much like other businesses. And the last couple of slides I have here are on our staffing request. And just before I jump into kind of the details here, as part of our continuous improvement program, we strive to focus on high-value work. So in 2018, we contracted out our locates program. That's what I would consider more low-value work, so we can redistribute those resources to focus on water quality, help implement the corrosion control program and other high-value work. That's why you'll see some differences from what we showed you last year to this year. In particular, for our 2019 request, I'll walk through them in clumps here as to what they are. So under the upper one in red, the one position, that is for an operator as part of the Woodward Upgrade Program. So in order to facilitate construction, we need an operator to work with our contractors to isolate processed areas and make sure that everything is available for them. The one temporary position we are asking for, that is in our compliance and regulations team, that is to start looking at the development of that wastewater quality management system that we spoke of earlier. Again, we're looking at that as a temporary position because we have a very strong drinking water quality management system, and we can likely leverage a lot of that good work. We just need somebody to kind of set up the framework. Once it's there, we can run with it with our existing complement. The biggest one that probably stands out to everybody there is the three under CD, which stands for our capital delivery team. So these are project manager positions that are looking to deliver the capital programs, the ones that are accelerated for the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, as well as the things like the airport, the Water Downs, the Bimbrooks, where we need to upgrade our assets very quickly. The final two positions on this list are under our water distribution and wastewater collection team, and these are for our sewer lateral cross connection. These are resources that have been improved temporarily in previous years, and we were asked to report back in 2019 as part of our budget process. That program is moving along quite well with those additional resources, and it is part of the Clean Harbor Program as well. In 2020, you'll see another large staffing request, and most of that is attributed to the Woodward Upgrade Project. I'm going to walk through that in another slide, just to kind of go through the history. And really, anything beyond that, we're looking at, those are more placeholders for growth. We talked about how our system grows, there's more infrastructure that is created. We know we're going to need more operators in the future. They may move around slightly from one year forward or back or to within a different section, whether we need an electrician or a millwright or an operator, but they're really plugs for future growth of our system. This is just in writing, kind of what I went through here, so you have it in front of you. And then kind of the end of my presentation is going to walk through the Woodward Upgrade Program. And it's always wanted to do this, so we're being completely open and transparent with council. We made, we forecasted the need for staff as part of the Woodward Upgrade Project in 2016. We were said that we're going to need 11 bodies once that facility was complete. And then in 2017, we changed that approach a little bit, saying, it's great to have the resources once the facility is constructed, but we need some of them to support the construction and the ongoing operation. So we revised our request strategy to reflect the following. That year in 2017, council approved those three positions, but we did not get the maintenance operator. That maintenance operator is the position that you see on my request for 2019 for the Woodward Upgrade Project. And then you'll see the seven that are still remaining in 2020. That is again, for the, once the facilities are constructed, again, we're having a brand-new tertiary treatment facility that needs an operator on our five shifts to run it. So the main message here, as we told you, 11 staff a number of years ago. It still remains 11 staff. We just kind of shifted them around for project delivery, but those resources are still required in order to provide the services that we're constructing. So that's really it for my portion of the presentation. I just want to end by thanking my management team and my staff that are out in the field working today. We have a very strong team, and kind of going through this presentation year over year, I'm really reminded of how fortunate I am to have such a strong team. With that, I will take questions.
Excellent, and thank you. And to remind your colleagues, Andrew is the first of two presentations, our acting general manager of finance. Brian's coming down in just moments, but first we have one, two, three, what about six counselors who want to ask you questions, Andrew, our director of water? And we'll start with you, Counselor Ferguson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Andrew. Good presentation, is a good cross-section of what we're doing and trying to do. My first question to you is, during the campaign, I have a very much expanded ward, about four times the existing one. And one of those includes Linden. And at Linden, I kept getting feedback, what's happening with our well? As you know, they've had decades of water quality problems to the point where a number of times, the medical officer of health put a stop drink order on them. I know you've, I recall in previous presentations, you did purchase a new location, but I saw nothing in your presentation today about Linden. What is the status, and when will it be up and running, the new facility?
So through you, Mr. Chairman. So the Linden contract for the construction tender is currently out on the street. I'm looking for Stuart up there to nod. Yes, so the construction tender is currently out on the street, so that will close shortly, and we hope to start construction in 2019. That is a project that is funded as part of the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, so we need to make sure we get it done lickety-split so we can leverage that funding. So that is where we're at.
That's big news. I'm surprised it didn't make your presentation, and Linden's been waiting a long time for that. And so will it be finished in 2019 or will it go into 2020?
It'll spill over into 2020. That is a pretty substantial construction project, but, you know, we'll certainly try to move it as quickly as we can.
Our message to the people, in Linden, you'll have your new facility in 2020.
Looking for Mark to nod? Yes.
Where's Mark? I was looking for him. Oh, there he is. Okay, he's hiding behind the city manager.
We are planning some newsletters and an outreach to the residents of Linden to update them on where we are going. So that's something that you're going to see early in the new year, and certainly our team wanted to sit down with you to go over that. You're certainly very experienced, but that's a whole new world inheriting a well-based system, so we wanted to get you up to speed on kind of where we were going. In a nutshell, that's where it is, but we'd be happy to discuss it in more detail with you when you have time.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Hopefully Kevin will pick up on it and get the Flamborough review, because I know it's a lot of concern out there that the quality of water that they're using in their homes. Secondly, is, and this may be a question for Mark, but I'm sure you know the answer. We approved the construction of a water tower in Anncaster, the corner of Garner and Fiddler's Green, and approved the dollars for that. But informally, I've heard that that's going to be canceled now because Transport Canada won't permit it because it's on the access to the big runway into Hamilton. Does that mean the water tower project is dead in Anncaster, and you're going to stay with variable speed pumps?
So I might have to have Mark jump in to fill in some of the details here, but certainly the airport, the air candidate, aviation guidelines had changed, and the original location did fall within their runway clearance area. So we have been looking at alternative sites, so I wouldn't say it's completely dead at this point. We were looking at other locations that it may fit within your ward. I know we've had a few discussions, certainly trying to put it somewhere strategically that it's not an eyesore to your community, but Mark might be able to provide a little bit more of an update on current state.
So Mark, we have had informal conversations on this, and I sense from previous conversations that you're going to ban the idea of a tower and stick with variable speed pumps at the Glencaster Station. Is that correct?
Not just yet, Counselor. We do have an opportunity to cite something out of the aviation airways. We're still looking at that to come to a conclusion. If that does not pan out, where we have too many restrictions on that small piece of property that stays outside of the influence of the airport, then we might have to look at those alternative options, and we'll be back in front of you to discuss that.
Okay, so not sure yet what the solution is, whether it's a different location or variable speed pump set. Is ready the answer?
Correct.
Okay, will we hear about that in 2019?
Yes, we will. We'll finalize our conclusions around what site opportunities we have. They're very limited, as you know, and we'll be back in touch to talk to you.
Thank you. And to you, Mr. Chairman, too. Andrew, I don't know whether you can answer this, but I'm going to keep asking this to different groups that come up to the podium, but our harbor's been inundated with blue-green algae to the point where people don't like to keep their boats down there anymore because they're having to push their $100,000 boats through two inches of algae that's built up in there. I know that public works tried to, and this may be a better question for Dan, but public works tried to vacuum it up or get it out. And of course, we're making a significant investment in redevelopment of the waterfront, and if we're going to be continuing to get inundated with blue-green algae, is there a fix on the way for 2019 for that?
Want me to start, Dan? I can start. So certainly, certainly well aware of the problems, not just Hamilton. This is a problem in many parts of, you know, Lake Erie certainly has its own challenges. But this is part of what we're doing is the Clean Harbor Program. The ultimate goal is to, you know, delist the harbor as an area of concern, and, you know, the Woodward upgrades are certainly a major component on that. Are we going to see a major change in 2019? No, this is a process that is going to take a long time. Just because we complete infrastructure upgrades doesn't mean that it instantly changes. It takes time for the harbor to rejuvenate itself, but it is something that is certainly a primary concern to us. In addition to all the work we're doing on our facilities, there also is a big phosphorus loading coming from our rural communities. So runoff is certainly contributing phosphorus into our, into our system.
That's the main cause of it, isn't it?
Phosphorus is, I mean, phosphorus creates the eutrophication processes, so phosphorus is a big one. So all the work we're doing at Woodward is going to limit or minimize the phosphorus we're releasing to the harbor, but that, there's still the rural aspect that is not as strongly regulated at this point. Dan might have some additional comments on that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. A number of months ago, committee heard a presentation from Gavin Norman about the issue down at the harbor and the fact that the beaches are being closed on a regular basis. So I've asked Mark to strike up a bit of a committee. There are a number of stakeholders, as you, as I know council appreciates, between the RAP and Bark and Bait and Conservation Authority and ourselves and Port Authority as well. So I, it's my intention to come back to GIC at some point this year to give an overview of it, because it is a very complex issue as to why we're continuing to see the blue-green algae in the harbor. I guess from my own perspective, I would hate for people to interpret that the occurrence of blue-green algae means that all the efforts that we've put into the harbor over the last 30 years was a failure. We've seen tremendous improvement in water quality in the harbor, but as climate change has its effects, and as we start to better understand the effect that the watershed is having on the harbor itself, so when Andrew alludes to kind of the agricultural activities that are going on in the watershed, that's contributing to it as well, but I think it's worthy of a dedicated presentation of its own, and so we'll be working with Mark and the team to come back to GIC, hopefully early in 2019, and do a presentation in partnership with the RAP to update committee.
Because we have spent a ton of money, and going to continue to spend a ton of money on our waterfront, whether it's the new docks, you know, the boaters are going to all disappear on us now because they don't want their vessels to sit in that. But more important than that, we're going to move a lot of people down there with the redevelopment of it, and the odor isn't very pleasant around it either. And, and so I would like to see an update in the action plan. And so, Dan, I'm hearing that we shouldn't expect anything better, to be better in 2019, because we need to warn the public that this will happen again.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Some of this, some of the circumstances that create the occurrence of blue-green algae are weather-related too, so sometimes it's dictated by the amount of precipitation we have and the temperatures that we experience throughout the summer. So I think there's a strong likelihood we could see something similar happen again next year. I've already talked to Craig Murdock and his team in Environmental Services to make sure that as soon as we get an indication of that, we'll try to be more proactive. But that's, that's just a stopgap. That's not getting at the root cause of the problem. So I think we're doing things to deal with the situation reactively, but we also need to, to update our plan as to what are the longer-term strategies to try to ensure that we get to the root cause of it.
So we will be ready this year, a little quicker with the vacuum or extracting system should it start to build up again in the harbor.
You missed your chair, that's correct.
Okay. Next question is, go to page 28 of your presentation. Hey, this is a pretty alarming slide. And so if we give you a 4.33% increase in your budget, what will that red bar go down by a year from now?
Three, Mr. Chairman, 4.66%.
Okay. How much will that red bar go down? 4.66%?
Oh, that's something that our engineering team is looking at right now. A lot of this work is already programmed. I mean, we can't just, if this was already in our forecast for next year or the year after, you know, it's got to go through the design process. I would not expect a major change to occur. This is, again, a long-term process. It's going to take some years to move the yardsticks on this one.
If you are asking for rate increases, probably double the rate inflation, if not close to triple the rate of inflation. You're expecting the users of water to fund that. That's got to be concerning to a lot of people. You've got water mains over 100 years old, and you're saying that by making this investment, putting the resources to it, it won't move that bar much?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, it may move it, but I can't tell you exactly what's, if it's going to go to 33 or 32 at this point. I mean, we can look at where our capital works are programmed for 2019. I suspect that because everything's programmed, we're not going to see a drastic increase in a single year or even two years. We're working with, with engineering services right now on kind of a long-term strategy for our water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure, and looking at kind of a full lifecycle reinvestment in what we need to do in order to move the bar on that. So that's a project that's currently ongoing, but it won't be complete until 20, into 2019.
Because I know I asked you this question, and you're my last question now. I've got one more after this. During our, last year we heard you had an $18 million surplus, which meant you couldn't spend the money that we were giving to you to do these repairs, and now you're asking for another 4.66%, but we're not seeing that, you know, 100-year-old water main or greater than 68-year-old water main bar moving much as a result of this. And I'm going to keep questioning you on this, Andrew, because I think that's what the public's looking for. Gets, it says it keeps you awake at night. I suspect it does to some of our residents who have homes in those areas and the people who need the water, that that may be at risk, and we don't seem to be addressing it if it's not going to move the bar by giving you an increase of three times the rate of inflation on a budget you couldn't spend at all in previous years.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, point received, and this is part of our staffing resource request for 2019. Those three project managers, those are the resources that we would need to help deliver some of these types of projects. We didn't spend all of our money last year, and that really wasn't on a capital side, that's more on operating side. But, you know, money's one part of the puzzle. If we don't have the team to deliver it, it's going to be even harder to move.
Exactly. If you haven't had the team, then why you keep asking for these, you know, I was hoping to see a slide, what percentage increases we provided to you over the last 10 years? And I guess Brian might bring that up.
I'll see that in your presentation.
To show you that, we put, made a substantial investment in our water infrastructure, water wastewater infrastructure, to try to fix this problem, and it's been significantly beyond inflation. And I'll raise that question when Brian's up. My last question is on slide 37. This is always the tension we have every year is FTEs, because once they get in, they never seem to come out. And you're going from six, but you want 10 more in 2020, six in 2019, 10 in 2020. Will we see a pretty significant reduction in staff for construction, as construction will be nearing completion by then?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, our staff that are delivering our construction projects, so those are typically just an individual project manager. So those are typically just an individual project manager. We have enough other projects on the go within our system. I mean, the first couple of slides of our presentation highlight, I think, 70 wastewater pumping stations, 21 water pumping stations, our reservoirs, our towers. They all need to be upgraded in the future. So once the large construction is done, those resources will move to some of those projects. But also, we're going to need more of a dedicated team to look at the work in Dundas.
And how many FTEs do you have working at Woodward's now on the expansion?
At Woodward, as part of the construction aspect of it. So we have approximately five or six staff as part of that team.
And we won't see some of those reduced, is what you're saying. It's always, and this is always the tension between councils and the department has, is that you want more staff. And that's why we always measure FTEs. So that comes to conclusion, you're saying you're just going to incorporate that into your staffing levels, and they won't see a reduction in 2020, as that construction starts the sunset?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, no, there's, there's enough additional capital works that we need all the horsepower we can get from a, you know, we have a lot of, we're looking for a lot of operational on the boots-on-the-ground type of staff. But we also need the project managers that can deliver the infrastructure upgrades. So we have more than we can deal with right now.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I've taken enough of your time. And so we'll be drilling down a little more in those staffing levels in the future years, but not necessarily do it today. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Brenda Johnson. Just waiting for my microphone. Thanks. Thank you. And thank you so much for all this information. Andrew, I just have four questions. One is, and it's probably more directed at Mark, considering he's giving the water tower update. The water tower that's slated to go on Trinity Church Road, and it's in the Red Hill Industrial Park, any updates on that? Because you know we're anxiously waiting for that to come, because the berm's going to follow, and the residents will be happy. Do you have an update?
Through the chair, I can maybe circle back with you, counselor, and give you details on where we are with the environmental assessment process and how we're progressing there.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. And the second thing I wanted to ask was, and it wasn't covered here. As you know, just probably about the, the spring, we ended up with a huge community meeting about the airport. And I see a lot of your staff up here, especially the ones that are boots on the ground and knocking on doors and, and making sure the residents are happy. Do we have an update on the airport and all the, the negative implications that happen when the airport has, for instance, the gly code, leach aid and the, and the smells?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, we've been working closely with Guy Paparelli. He's kind of our, our window into the airport world. I've been advised that they have, they're in the process of beginning to initiate the upgrades on their site. I don't know the exact timeframe. And I think we've heard this story a couple of times in the past. So we're trying to push them hard to get some, some firm commitment there. I don't, I think we have to probably provide a more formal update offline, because I'm going to have to talk to some of the other teams to give you a more wholesome response.
Right. And I, and I also want to put a shout out to the staff. They have been absolutely amazing for the community. They're knocking on doors, and they're investigating the smells, and they're, and they're coming up sometimes with, it's just low-hanging fruit that, that eliminates the smells completely from their homes. But it doesn't eliminate it throughout the community from our, our stormwater management. The one thing I didn't notice in your, in your presentation, we talked about the, the backflow programs, was the well decommissioning. So my understanding is, is it your department that takes care of this? Or am I talking to a totally, should I be talking to a totally different department?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, which well are you talking about?
Like wells that are in the urban area. And these are, these are wells that, that people have, they pump, attach to them, and they're still in their backyards. And my understanding is we have a decommissioning program that help people to actually seal them off. I'm seeing Mark nodding his head yes, and everybody else looking like this. Okay, so if somebody can get back. Oh, thanks, Mark.
Through the chair, we do have a decommissioning sort of grant-type program that we run through our source protection staff. It generally focuses on rural examples. That's where we see most of the uptake, but.
Right. But I can tell you, I have a couple of residents in the urban boundary that also have wells. Anyways, so that's good to know. Thank you very much for that. And my last question is about your new FTEs that you've covered in the last couple of, of slides. Due for the 4.66 rate increase, that this was a multi-year budget rate that we, we agreed to, as far as I know, eight, at least eight years ago. These new FTEs are the ones that you're sliding in right now. Are they covered under the 4.66 rate increase?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, the resources for this year are included in the.
Okay. So they're not going to be on the general levy at all. That's, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions. Really appreciate it. All within your timeframe as well. Counselor Jankel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the presentation, Director Grace. I think water and wastewater are probably two of the most important services that we provide as a city. So it's good to see you. We're in, we're in good hands there. I have two things I'd like to maybe get your input on. You mentioned briefly, especially when looking at the, the map for the city with the 1950s infrastructure. So pretty much all the residential houses on that map where those services are delivered would have half-inch lead service pipes unless they've had them replaced. You touched on the corrosion control program with the addition of orthophosphate. Could you maybe just explain what that is and how it works?
Sure. So let me all go back to the slide, because there's a couple of good, a couple of good points there to. So, so again, through you, Mr. Chairman, councilors supported the orthophosphate-based program. So we are now, we've constructed a new facility that is dosing phosphoric acid into the drinking water. So again, the, the image that you see up on the slide right now, so phosphoric acid is a very naturally occurring element of everybody's diet. So part of our outreach campaign was to make people aware that, you know, this isn't, this isn't a dangerous chemical. So you need to consume 104 glasses of water to get the equivalent phosphorus of a banana. So really, what that phosphoric acid does is it starts to create a protective barrier on the inside of the pipe. So anyone who has a lead service, as that barrier was formed, it prevents the lead in the pipe from leaching into your drinking water and making its way into your home. That's really the big approach. Behind that, I would say we are still really pushing our lead service line replacement program. Ultimately, the best thing is to get the lead out. So really, this is more of a multi-barrier approach. I wouldn't suggest that in the future, even if we see all of our red service lines replaced, we may want to continue with this orthophosphate-based program. It's really more of a multi-barrier approach. Lead service line replacement will not address, or address homes that maybe have lead fixtures or lead-containing solder. I don't know if that answered your question. That's maybe a little bit more information about kind of how the, how the program's working.
Thank you. Second question is, you briefly touched on climate change. Maybe you could just delve into that a little bit more as terms of stormwater management with extreme events, what the kind of the future planning is in terms of climate change, and how that might tie into stormwater rate review?
So, so through you, Mr. Chairman, we are certainly experiencing some wild and wet weather the last couple of years. So we are trying to be strategic where we can. So I mentioned the flooding and drainage master servicing study. That's really trying to look at where we're going through more of a climate change lens. In some areas, we are, we're still somewhat reactive. So when we had elevated lake levels last year, we worked with Council Collins in the beach strip to look at a review of that kind of independent area. But more wholesomely, I think, as we move forward in what we see from climate change, really, if we want to start making investments in newer types of infrastructure and technology to address stormwater, this is really where we're going to see a benefit of a stormwater rate. So our, our stormwater rate now is kind of blended with our wastewater. And really, when you look at the prioritization, wastewater usually trumps our stormwater infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Man.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Andrew, for a great presentation. You had mentioned, leading up to the Clean Harbor Program presentation, that part of what inspired or moved action there was council's discussion about what the indigenous women on the flotation device outside on the harbor were raising. So I'm just curious about the ongoing relationship that the city has with our indigenous community, and specifically the water walkers and their observations of the harbor, and how we maintain a relationship going back and forth in terms of sharing the improvements that, that we see in this report, and also hearing back from that community in terms of their observations on the health and vitality of our water.
So through you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I do think a touch point is probably due again with especially those two specific individuals. I know Dan had met with them probably last year to walk them through our facility and show them kind of some of the improvements that we're making. But trying to keep that ongoing dialogue is certainly very important. The city has a very, is really working hard on our indigenous relations. We have a built-in staff member as part of our corporate services team, I believe, that is looking at our relationships from an indigenous standpoint. So certainly trying to leverage all the great work she does to try and really push our message. So I would agree, we probably need to do a better job as Hamilton Water of sharing what we've done. So I'll, I'll take that, and we'll reach out and try and make sure everyone's aware.
So my second question is about the Woodward project. You are telling a great story about the investment and the, what we're anticipating coming out of that investment. It's an incredible once-in-a-lifetime kind of investment into our infrastructure, and I'm pretty excited about it. I'm curious about being able to tell more about the story. So how many apprentices do we know are, are coming on to the construction? Any other kind of good, good community benefits that we can speak about there? And finally, I'll end with, I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation on the stormwater review in the year. Thank you.
So, so thank you. So through you, Mr. Chairman, just, I don't, just a little chart there on the bottom kind of shows some of the activity. So at full swing, so once the third contract is under construction, we're going to see in excess of 250 construction workers. So that's not our staff. That would be, you know, various contractors on site. So certainly, there is a lot of activity and a lot of employment opportunities in the city based on these programs.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I caught earlier, and I, you know, I obviously worked in, in the industry where there was shift work, and there's four shifts. You identified five shifts. So help me understand how you end up with five shifts?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, it's been a little while since I've been connected with our, our operational piece. So maybe I'll let Nick can speak to that.
Nick Waters? So through you, Mr. Chair, we actually have six shifts that are involved with the operation of our water and wastewater treatment facilities. That's both the treatment plant and all of our outstations. There's a day shift that works on both the water and the wastewater side. And then we have a five-shift rotation. So we have, have staff working on continental hours, so 12-hour shifts, that are running both our, our water and wastewater infrastructure. And it is a, a five-shift rotation over the course of approximately five weeks.
So help me understand this in regards to efficiency and costing. I worked in the mining industry where it was a 12-hour shift, and it was four shifts. And it met all the requirements of providing, and a lot of the similar services on, on the wastewater in regards to some of the processes in place. And they operated on four shift. They went to a centralized, like you are, a centralized control room, and thereby cut two-thirds of the, the labor that, because they used to have operators on every station. Now they got one central operator, and you just got the maintenance. And, and, and those pieces don't go away. So help me understand whether we're getting efficiencies on the shift program that we currently have implemented, or have we have really looked at whether there's a different approach? Because when you look at 12-hour shifts, I mean, you're looking at day shift, you're looking at night shift. And then you have one shift that's always off, they come on, that's your four shift. So the fifth shift isn't, I just having trouble understanding it.
So through the chair, the shift structure that's in place is really related to making sure that we're not overloading staff with hours. You talk about the implementation of SCADA centralized, or excuse me, systems control and data acquisition. That's our human mechanical or human-machine interface. If you, I mean, I'd happy to, be happy to bring you down through the water and wastewater treatment facility. Sometimes certainly, if you're down there, you'd really find that we are a bit of a barebones operation from a staffing perspective. On any one of our shifts, we have our rotating shifts, we have five staff. So two operators operating in our wastewater facility, two operators operating in our water treatment facility, with one supervisor controlling the entire process. I think that a lot of the efficiencies that you're talking about were achieved much earlier in, in Hamilton's water history, particularly when the operations were contracted out through American Water Services. And then when the city took that, that operation back in-house, a lot of those efficiencies were found at that time.
Okay. Well, I'll sort of take it offline. And I mean, five shifts doesn't, just does not make sense to me in, in the industry. So there's something that is not connecting in this conversation that we need to go offline on. The, the other question I have is crossovers. We talked about that in regards to, what is the budget you certainly set aside for investigation of crossovers?
Sorry, through, Mr. Chairman, speaking of our sewer lateral, the cross-connection program.
Correct.
So again, that's probably something that Nick's more intimate with, the day-to-day details.
So again, through the chair. So we currently have the equivalent of two and a half staff that work on the program. Those staff are, they're serving multiple, multiple functions. So it is an FTE equivalency. So I mean, from the staffing perspective, you're looking at the cost for those two and a half staff. We're currently budgeting approximately $850,000 in capital expenditures associated with that program in a year. And those monies are going into our sewer system investigations, sampling, dye testing, CCTV inspections to identify the cross-connections. And that money also goes through our contractual services programs to do our cross-connection correction. So that's actually making the fix in the road allowance to make sure the sewers are connected appropriately.
And then smoke detection is the other vehicle you use for this?
Through the chair, smoke detection, we've found, is not particularly effective for the cross-connection program. We do use it for other, other investigations in the sewer system. Really, what we found for our sewer lateral cross-connection program is that well-coordinated CCTV inspection along with dye testing is our, our best tool to identify these.
So, and I appreciate that. You know, we've, I think we're working in conjunction with Redeemer College now. But I know that the Shadoak Creek has had high E. coli issues. And, and as I understand, we embarked on the program, identified a percentage of issues and crossovers in the West Mountain area. But my understanding that that E. coli level is still fairly high within the creek. So I, I'm looking at value for dollar being spent. I'm trying to understand why, if we're spending these dollars and pretty well left West Mountain in regards to the, the investigations, the levels are still higher, they're still high?
So I'm just going to start, maybe I'll throw it back to Nick. But through you, Mr. Chairman, so certainly we are working very closely with Redeemer College. They actually just did a presentation, excuse me, on Tuesday of this week that Mark attended. They were at City Labs last Friday. And we actually are seeing, this is the first year where we actually saw a decrease in E. coli from their sample points. So it's a single point, but I would say that that is starting to show the benefit of the program. We have identified a lot of cross-connections in that area, also some on the, on the East Mountain as well. But primarily, we are focused in the, in the Shadoak Creek.
Well, the reason I mention it is because when you say one point, I mean, my understanding, because I've also had these conversations, they're still high, higher than that we would declare as acceptable going into our watershed. So, and I know that there's been conversations about natural occurring issues with animals and so forth. So I don't know if we've clearly identified through our labs what percentage of the coli contribution is through human contribution versus other contribution. Have we determined that yet?
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Chairman, that was part of Redeemer's presentation on Tuesday. I couldn't be in attendance because there was another meeting. But they did start to talk about how they're speciating those samples to determine the human component versus the wildlife component. And I think they gave some high-level numbers, and it was in the magnitude of 10% human, 10% human and 90% natural.
So back to the efficiency of the, the, the current investment we've made on investigating in, in crossovers. I mean, I've got some issues with the program, and that, I don't think it's valid and is not needed. I just don't know if we're getting value, because I don't know if we're taking a, a completely comprehensive approach to this issue. Because for every one step forward, it seems that we take two, four, uh, uh, steps back. Because through our, and I thank you for that, the individual conversations we had, it's become very abundantly clear that it's not a problem that's going to necessarily go away. So you can go through the West Mountain, for example, do your inspections, catch what you catch, fix what you can fix. Hopefully, you catch 90% of the, the issues. But it doesn't mean that more issues start expanding based on works that are being done. So I want to focus on a complete wraparound. So not only are we going in identifying the problem, but we're preventing the problem from being created after we leave. And I don't know if we've got the proper processes in place in regards to any work. First of all, I don't know if the, the work that's being done, homes in regards to these, the plumbing and that, is prescribed to be licensed? And do we have inspections to ensure that the conclusion of the works being done that we're aware of, that we inspected to ensure that they're not crossing the surface?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, certainly things are changing. But I know Dan put his hand up there to speak.
Dan, one step forward, two steps back in questionable plumbing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just because I've been at this for a long, long time. Andrew referred to the quality management system that he wants, he's looking to develop for on the wastewater side. I think that's really what you're angling for here, is to have a quality management system so that we've got the procedures and the protocols in place, and we have them at the right level. We've been working a lot with the folks in planning over the last number of years to ensure when new construction is occurring, that they're ensuring at that moment that those, that those new properties are hooked up properly. Because I think one of the lessons we've learned over the last decade or so is that a lot of these issues occurred on day one, which is really heartbreaking to think about. But from a quality management perspective, when we've got the proper procedures in place, and we're doing annual review, and we're doing risk assessments, and we, we pull our planning partners in, into that, that quality management system with us, that, that's how you get at these types of things, to try to ensure that they don't happen in future. And the environmental response to the work that we are undertaking right now, sometimes it is difficult to quantify. That's, that's very, you know, I'm very happy to hear that Redeemer's starting to see some improvements. But it's not necessarily binary. And sometimes it, you know, I, I think we have to start thinking about these types of projects as stewardship projects. It's not a set it and forget it. We constantly have to be looking at it. And that's why quality management system, I think, can serve us really well in that regard.
Yeah. And again, that's a pretty macro statement. And again, I don't know what it, it all includes. And I'm sure the layperson wouldn't understand what that includes too. But what I see is we're going out and identifying and fixing what we identify. But we're not necessarily preventing the continued expansion after we've already gone through a geographic area. So it's not just new development, but it could be, we, houses being redeveloped or expanded on, or, or new works being done, where a license, well, I would think. on, or new works being done, where a license, well, I would think, and I would hope, one of the requirements is, is a licensed plumber comes in, inspections are done, and we're ensuring that crossovers aren't being put in place. I don't know, it's pretty clear that the mechanisms we've had over the last decade, two decades, or 10 decades, we haven't had the proper oversight in regards to even new construction relative to these crossover hookups, and that's another issue. What quality control are we putting in place to ensure that those inspections are being done?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So with respect to, again, leaning on the quality management notion pretty heavily, but it's when you write those procedures that you identify all your critical control points. You identify where are those opportunities for things to go wrong, and make sure that we put in extra inspection, or third-party certification, and that kind of thing, to ensure that it's not happening. I would like to invite Tony to just add to this, because he can articulate what planning's been doing in this regard.
Through the chair, to the counselor, for the last 10 years, we implemented a dye testing and certification programs for all new builds, as part of the acceptance before we release every security that we hold within any new development. They're, it was there intentionally.
Tony's trying to tell you that he's got a radio voice. Go ahead.
Oh, ignore that, lucky I'm not sensitive. As it relates to that, so we actually, because of the issues that were raised historically through Dan's group, in order to coordinate, because we have a shifting area responsibility, as you know, we service the public corridor, then it gets transferred over to the building department when they do the home construction to ensure everything is completed and the right connections are made. We've introduced that dye testing program and certification, that the professional engineer that designed this system is confirming that the pipe is actually connected to the right outlet.
That's been going on for the last 10 years. That is absolutely wonderful to hear, because obviously we've identified our shortfalls in the past. So that applies for new builds. What does it do for renovations?
Through the chair, to the counselor, the counselor Ferguson's out the door. So as it relates to now these new demolitions that are going on, if it's a full demolition, they have a requirement to abandon the existing services, and then with the new construction, construct new services, and that's being inspected by one group at this point in time, as it gets brought right to the building, so we're avoiding that, and they still have to provide that level of certification as it relates to the new construction that's connected to the right pipe. So that's going on now. Ann Castor works better because they're under a pilot program with the Monster Home and demolition, so it comes under a site plan, and we can force various agreements and certification programs.
Great. Well, it's great to hear that we're taking the quality of steps to ensure that we are not expanding the problem while we're trying to fix it in other areas. Counselor, you're just about a triple overtime on your questions. Disputed water bills. So you're just about a triple. If you want to come on as a second, one more question, and then we'll get you on as a second-time speaker. Disputed water bills. We get a lot of them as counselors. Can you help me understand what's the best approach when there are disputed water bills, the arbitration, or the process in which we try to advocate or resolve the issues? I mean, now I'm hearing from a constituent that not only is it disputed, a water bill, because it's disputed, it may impact on whether they can continue paying their taxes in the current process in which they have embarked on. So if you're in dispute, and at the same time we're taking unilateral action to punish them even in a broader sense, I'm just trying to understand what, and how, and when was that decision made? It's like John's voice trying to help us out here.
Through the chair, generally speaking, I would suggest the council office start with community outreach in water, and then, that's Cassandra right now, and then Cassandra would engage Eletra or myself, depending on what the specific billing issue is about.
I think my issue is that if it's disputed water bill, that's in current conversation, discussion, and then the homeowner's getting letters threatening, not only is this, you know, there's an issue here that they're not even aware of, and they're trying to resolve, and they claim they already paid, but at the same time, we're threatening them in regards to the current payment practice on their taxes. So now we've tied that issue into the arrangement, so it sounds like that's a policy decision.
Through the chair, generally speaking, if there's a billing matter under dispute, we would hold off on any transfer of unpaid arrears to the property tax. Other than that, there's really no other property tax payment issue that would be related to water bills.
Okay, so there hasn't been any shift. So I appreciate that. I know we're dealing with a couple of those issues right now. Haven't had the meetings yet, so I just wanted to at least get it out there that I wasn't aware that there's a policy shift that they would be, if they have a water issue, that it would impact the way they pay their residential taxes. So I'll clarify that offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Partridge. Yes, thank you, Chair. And, Andrew, I've just got a couple of questions. Can you go back to slide number 32, please?
32.
32. Thank you. So my questions are around the aging infrastructure, the water main breaks, and lastly, I'm going to come to Freilton Water System. So at the very bottom there, you can see the Collapsin Avenue and Dundas Street. My question to you is around the age of the pipes. We talk about our aging infrastructure, and, you know, obviously, anything before 1950, there's risk that there's going to be water main Thank you. That there's, you know, concerns of water main breaks and infrastructure deficits. My concern with all the new builds that we've got going on in Water Down and Ben Brook and Upper Stony Creek, that Collapsin Avenue pipe was not that old. How old was it?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I believe that Dave is 40 years old, that pipe? I thought we might get some questions on break, so Dave's our distribution guy, so he brought all the stats for all of the pictures that have been shown in the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dave.
Through the chair, that pipe on Collapsin and Dundas was 47 years old.
It's 47 years old, okay. So that area is where the, is where the new Collapsin Power Center has been built. So even though all the builds around it, infrastructure is new, I appreciate that the one on Dundas Street is old, but it broke. I believe it was, and Dave, you can maybe confirm this, it broke three times in two days in different sections.
Through the chair, yes, the pipe did break three different sections over two days.
Over two days, right. So there was significant flooding there, and certainly it's a very high-traffic area. So, you know, and we had the same thing happen up in Carlisle with the intersection at Tansley and Flamro Hills. We had a significant break there. So how much of a concern is it about the, you know, water main breaks in pipes that are not that old? Is that happening across the city?
So, excuse me. So through you, Mr. Chairman, I did try to allude to the fact that, you know, age is not the only factor that contributes to a pipe's condition. There are lots of other elements. We are looking at different materials of construction, and, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here, but certainly something that's approaching 50 years of age, it's certainly not abnormal to see that. Again, when you're looking at PVC piping, break frequency can certainly differ with age and different materials of construction.
Right, and thank you. That's a good answer, Mr. Chair, because, you know, it is not just about the age of the pipe. It is the material, and, you know, what types of materials are being used in the more recent pipe construction, depending on what type of pipe it is, and how deep is it buried in the ground. I mean, there's a number of factors, the freeze-thaw cycle that goes with that. So I do appreciate those answers. My last question is around Freilton, and particularly in the Will Dana Estates, but we've had some issues over several years with the Freilton Water Tower, and of course, the Will Dana Estates has another, a well there. Has everything settled down, or are there any plans for upgrades, or are they finished?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to lean on Mark for that one.
Mark, thank you.
Through the chair, yes, we're looking at Freilton right now from the perspective of pumping capacity and overall pumping capacity in view of the growth that we know is coming in Freilton as well.
Right.
So maybe interested more in your concerns about the tower itself. From my perspective, the tower has got plenty of capacity, but we do have possible limitation in the pumping rates to fill the tower and meet the demands of that community. We're assessing that sort of at a planning level right now, and we're trying to come up with conclusions of what might be necessary in the future.
I wouldn't mind going offline and updating meeting, perhaps on the Freilton Tower, and I'll include Counselor Vanderbeek in that as well, because it certainly does impact the northern part of Herward. Thank you. We'll follow up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wilson.
All right, go ahead. Thank you. I just have a few, maybe even one question, two questions. Just first a comment. I'm very encouraged, and I look forward to the stormwater rate review that you will be bringing forward in the new year, and I am encouraged that you're sensitive to climate change and our need to give thought to that in our budget, in our operations, because so am I. On the protective plumbing program, the grants are decreasing by 75, $750,000. I think the rationale is that the demand is going down. I'm just wondering, do we know if, if our storms are increasing in magnitude, what percentage of eligible homes have been provided with the subsidy, and how much bigger financial drain the program might present in future, I mean, in terms of?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, so there's a little bit of a history to the protective plumbing program. I didn't walk through its full entirety, but when you're seeing that $750,000, sorry, that $750,000 decrease to our overall budget, that is not, that is not saying that we're reducing funding to the program. So a number of years ago, we, contractor, for lack of better terms, exposed some weaknesses in the program. So through council's direction, we looked at alternative delivery methods. We now have a rostered contractor, five of them that go out and provide that service, and through that competitive procurement process, we saw approximately a 35%, 40% reduction in cost per install. So we're just adjusting our line item to reflect these new values. We hope to install as many backwater valves as we did in the previous years. It's just under a little bit of a different funding strategy now. In terms of the percentage of homes eligible, we'd have to take a look at our mapping. We could certainly dive into that and provide an update for you, but certainly it is a very, it is a very active program. Anyone who has flooded in the past, we typically do hear from them to participate in the program.
For the new hires, as a newbie, I'm trying to understand the plant upgrade and phases involved. Are the new hires in relationship to the upgrade or the expansion? Can you remind me of that again?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, they would be, the staff we're requesting right now, or in 2020, those operational staff, those are associated with the Woodward Upgrade Project. Sometimes, in the past, it was different terminology, so I may have incorrectly said "expansion." That is for the Woodward Upgrade Project. So that is that $350 million worth of new infrastructure we're building. Those are the resources to operate that equipment.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Marula.
Thank you. You good? Turn me on. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of things. Firstly, with respect to the deficiencies, I know that over the years, there's been significant discussions surrounding the infrastructure deficit. And last term, I recall I brought forward a motion to really focus in on what that actually means, because we throw out a number regarding the deficit itself, but we don't, we never really dig down to the details of it all. And the motion was to try to not only highlight the deficiencies, but all the improvements as well, because we have spent tens of millions of dollars of upgrades, particularly, as you know, in Ward 4 East Hamilton, where what I inherited was flooded basements with raw sewage, to a point where we mitigated and eliminated the problem. And we have a vast network of new sewers and water lines and so on. So what I think I requested at that time was basically a chart and highlight what is in dire need, what is potentially in need, and what basically is considered to be in good shape. So serious, quasi-serious, non-serious type of graph or assessment. Because what we're doing presently, that we found out last year, through you, Mr. Chairman, was that we're lumping everything into the mix. So we don't know if it's potentially going to go today or 10 years from now. We just know what, how old it is. And we all know that that in itself doesn't necessarily mean it's a deficiency. So I think what we need to stop doing is compounding that number when we don't know the actual details of what that number means. Because what it does, it creates hysteria. And I understand that, and I'm supportive of the increase. I understand the importance of being responsible as it pertains to investment or infrastructure, but I also believe that it's important that we're completely clear and have a complete understanding thoroughly of what that deficiency means. Because I know when I bought my house, my house was built in 1919, it's going to be 100 years old, but I don't need to demolish my house. It's in pretty good shape. And so just because it's old doesn't necessarily mean it's deficient, is my point. And, but through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering what the status of the, of that motion is. Firstly, maybe Clerks can elaborate later, if we can dig down, I think it was during last budget period, and secondly, what your thoughts are accordingly.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I saw Dan jump up and down there to speak, so I'm going to throw this to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and forgive me, Counselor, I don't remember the motion. We're happy to go back through the records to make sure that we haven't missed it. I think you're talking about a very important issue that will be coming to council in 2019, and Gordon McGuire and I are having this conversation probably daily. There is, we're really talking about asset management, and your point is well taken, that, you know, a facility that the building envelope might be 50 or 60 years old, it's got another 50 years in it, but the mechanical equipment that's inside of it, the HVAC, or the windows might need to be replaced. And so those are all the nuances of asset management, and I think sometimes when we come before council, we always maybe characterize it that we have to knock the entire building down and replace it, and that's not the case. So I'm hoping that through throughout 2019, when we're back in front of committee, to update committee on Bill 6, that we'll also have established some different language that we're using around what type of asset management we're doing, what type of capital renewal that we're doing, whether it's, because growth is very different than state of good repair, but in between there, there's something that's an enhancement. So it's not necessarily that the facility is at the end of its useful life, but we have to strengthen the system in one way or another, and a very good example of that would be the Hillcrest Pump Station in Ward 1. That's a new facility that had nothing to do with growth. It wasn't a state of good repair, but it was a $15, $18 million facility that we needed to make our system stronger. So there's a lot of nuance in there that I'm not sure that as staff, we've done a great job articulating that to council, so that's certainly on the work plan in 2019, and we'll make sure that we look for your motion so that we're reflecting the information that you were seeking when you put it forward.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Chairman, the other component to this is the fact that there was a, there was a discussion surrounding the fact that the infrastructure deficit doesn't only pertain to water lines, sewers, sidewalks, and roads. That number pertains to all of our assets, including our housing stock, including our rec centers, and so. So if you can elaborate on that too, that would be greatly appreciated.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's correct, and Bill 6 is going to force us to bring to council all of those assets. I think right now, the city is responsible for about $20 billion in assets. The core assets, as defined by Bill 6, represents about 75% of that, $15 billion. But when you're, if you're thinking about a water pump station or a city housing facility, there's a lot of similarities in how you manage those assets. There's obviously differences and complexities, but the rationale and the science behind it is relatively similar, and that's what we need to build as we go through 2019 and 2020 to make ourselves ready to be compliant with Bill 6, is to make sure that we're identifying the level of service we want to see in those facilities, identifying the backlog or the needs, and developing a strategy to fund those needs going forward.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I think it's also important to note that this so-called infrastructure deficit, and that word "infrastructure" is now being used, I can recall at a time infrastructure deficit, and that word "infrastructure" is now being used, I can recall at a time when nobody used it, until people had feces in their basement, then everybody started using it, and then became a priority, which was a blessing in disguise. But having said that, that deficit is something not created within the last 10, 15, 20, or 30 years. It's something that we inherited from the 1950s, 40s, 50s, 60s, and 70s, particularly during the 50s, 60s, and 70s, when there were years when surpluses were seen, and not one penny was saved for a rainy day, literally. I know people think that everything the city council does is wrong, and everything that's good about the city, someone else did, but everything that's bad is all our fault. But the reality is, if you look over the last two decades, particularly since 2004, and you look at the amount invested in infrastructure, it's unprecedented. But if you look prior to 2004, and you look at the 20, or 30 years prior to that, total disgrace. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I've said, I've said a number of times, we have celebrated, applauded, and erected statues for people who really are responsible for the infrastructure deficit that we have today, we have. And it's unfortunate that we have to also take the blame for the mistakes of the past, but I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You appreciate your commentary. Counselor Paul.
Oh, great. Thank you. This is not a question, but a look at, as my first day really in council, I just want to say thank you to Andrew and actually all the managers. And the reason is, they took opportunity to give me and every other counselor here to have one-on-one look at the water, wastewater and the stormwater rate, and to look at it closely, and at that time, ask all the question we wanted. So I want to say thank you for that. And that is why I think we have a high-quality staff who are always available to us, which I appreciate that more than anything, because as a new counselor, I need to know more and more of what's going on, and you have extended the invitation, and I want to say thank you.
Well, that's very kind of you. Thank you. Did you want to respond, Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you very much. We are certainly one small piece of the puzzle, so there's certainly a lot for you to learn, but I appreciate your interest in our portfolio.
Very kind of you. Counselor Vanderbeek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Andrew, thanks so much for the presentation, it was great as usual, and you're always very professional, and give us lots of information to chew on. And I really appreciate that. My question is, back to the water main breaks and the age of the infrastructure. We had several breaks within a very short time at the corner of Governor's Road and Creighton this year, during the construction that was going on on Governor's Road. And it was quite confusing for people, because I think they thought it was part of the Governor's Road construction, and I know it wasn't. But do you know how old that infrastructure is? I know it wasn't one of the pictures, so you may not have come with it, but you happen to know how old it is, and what happened, and whether or not it's been completely repaired, or whether they're going to have to go back in?
Nick? So through you, Mr. Chairman. Dave and Nick usually have a pretty good memory, so I bet you they have that up there.
Not too long ago.
So through the chair, we can certainly get back to you on the age of infrastructure in that specific area. I would advise, though, that the issues with the water main breaks in that area were related to the ongoing construction project. There were some issues with some installations up there, and that led to the problem in that area. That is completely repaired at this point in time? I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, thank you. I think what I really meant was that it wasn't anticipated as part of the construction project. So thank you, and I will follow up with you offline. I'm assuming that you don't know how old that infrastructure is, that really was where I was going.
So through the chair, the infrastructure that was being installed on Governor's Road, obviously a lot of it's brand-new, and they were tying into some existing piping, of which we don't have the age in front of us right now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Andrew.
Counselor Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank Mr. Grayson and the staff for a really comprehensive report. It's a significant document that really goes across so many areas, and it was very helpful for me. Just some quick questions. With regards to effluent quality, is there a protocol in place where council is advised on a regular basis what the effluent quality is coming out of Dundas or the Woodward Sewer Treatment Plant?
So through you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly there is a lot of focus on the drinking water side, and you certainly see our reports as the owner of our system. We do report on the performance of our entire system, but maybe we can shed some more light to that, so it stands out a little bit more in the future.
Personally, I would, we really appreciate it. We've spent an awful lot of money, and given where we were 20 years ago with effluent and where we are today, it's a remarkable change, but we really need to have some oversight in terms of what is happening. Along the same lines, 20 years ago, the big issue was bypasses, plant bypasses and discharges. Do we receive a report in terms of the number of bypasses or discharges, whether accidental or not, from Dundas or Woodward? As a council, do we get that report?
So I'm just skipping back here, sorry. So through you, Mr. Chairman, so on this slide right here, we do talk about, so in 2018 in particular, there was 14 plant bypasses at our Woodward facility. That number, it's a little bit of a mixed message here, but, you know, we have increased our plant size in the past, we have more functionality there, but we've also seen, you know, more significant weather in the last couple of years. But, you know, we still do experience, you know, it's the challenge we have with the combined sewer network, is that it works very well in dry conditions, but during significant rain events, we do still occasionally have bypasses. So we did, we did see 14 this year.
And so supplemental, is it possible, or do we receive, when the incident is happening, is council notified that there's been a discharge into the harbor? And is there an annual report indicating, here's all the discharges, here's what caused it, and here's how we're trying to mediate it?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, so from the, I just saw the release of the environmental plan for Ontario, so that is something that is a heavy focus in that. So we certainly do not currently real-time report any overflows or bypasses that we have. We have had ongoing conversations with our local ministry office, but I see that as becoming a priority from the provincial office, so we're certainly going to have to work through how we would go about meeting, they haven't set a timeline yet, but I'm assuming that's going to be a future requirement. There will be some work that needs to be done on our end, so that we can provide more real-time information for council, as well as for our residents.
I think that's important, given where the province is going. It is interesting, though, because in 2016, they were willingly releasing discharge notices from the Ministry of Environment. In 2017, they stopped that, and yet they're trying to improve the program, so it's, there's a, seems to be a bit of a dichotomy there. With regards to the water main breaks, I took note on page 20 of your slides, there's a delay in capital rehab is leading to increased operating costs. Is it possible to actually get a report on the total cumulative number of water breaks that occur, what the cost was to repair them, and perhaps how many of them were based on age, or how many of them were based on an accident from a construction site, or whatever the case is?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have that all embedded in my presentation today, but absolutely, any water main break that we respond to, we know where it was, the age of the infrastructure, how much it cost to replace, so we could certainly compile that information, information for everybody. On average, I think this year, we're trending towards probably 275 water main breaks or so, Dave. So that is a relatively normal year for us, and maybe a little higher than our five-year average. The beginning of 2018 was pretty cold, so we did see some water main breaks last year in kind of early January into February. The rest of the year has been, from my understanding, a relatively normal year.
So the point of the question, Mr. Chairman, is that cumulatively, we are having 200 or over 200 water main breaks, and it's costing us this amount of money, and yet our rehab is not, the capital rehab is not sufficient to offset that. It would be important, and I'm looking to Mr. Zegarik now, to actually understand the asset management, are we doing enough? Should we be doing more, and what the outcome is? If we're paying more just to fix them, and we could have eliminated or mitigated that by paying a little bit more on the rehabilitation upfront, it seems to be a more prudent decision?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think the council is identifying some of our future conversations with council with respect to what Dan made reference to, which is the regulatory changes around state of, state of our infrastructure, Bill 6. We'll have to have a conversation around if we continue to defer capital investments, are we just simply transferring those risks and costs onto the operating budget side? So if you defer replacing your roof in your home, are you incurring costs for drywall, plaster damage, flooded floors? And so those are the conversations we need to have with council. A, in July of this year, when we develop a policy that will help to govern us as it relates to setting service levels for infrastructure, and then as soon as 2021, when we set those service level standards in collaboration with council with respect to our core assets, including water and wastewater. So absolutely, those need to be part of our conversation, as well as future conversations around automation, if there are opportunities to do reconciliations of our service and try to identify where there may be future breaks, whether it's through our metering, through future investments in automation, to try to identify opportunities to mitigate risks. And so that will form part of our future conversations with council as well.
That's it, thank you. Thank you. First times, questions, Mayor Fred Eismerger.
So thank you. You know, I don't have a long series of questions, but I do want to follow on what Councilor Marula was talking about, which is that we're really playing catch-up from, you know, many decades ago, when, you know, capital investment and setting money aside for future rehabilitation was really not on the radar at all. And so when I first got here in 1991, we really weren't doing any of that asset management, you know, approach. And thankfully, we instituted an asset management plan and got us, you know, quite a ways down the road, well ahead of the requirement from the province now to have all municipalities have asset management plans, and started, you know, developing a water and sewer rate that actually reflected the future demands of the system. So we've made, you know, I would say we've made some really significant progress, but to suggest that in a, you know, in a short period of time, we can catch up on what happened prior to 1970 or, and beyond, when they didn't send any of that money aside, you know, was, it's going to take us a while to get there. But I think to your, to your point, a more granular asset management plan that actually breaks it down even more, will give us a much better, clearer, prioritized picture of where we need to put the resources first, rather than, you know, this pipe broke, and therefore we'll get in there and fix it, and, you know, we may have a pipe, you know, somewhere else that's, that's on the verge, that needs, that needs attention right now. It may be 20 years old, but we know that the condition of the pipe. So that kind of granular kind of asset management is where we need to get to. So I would say, you know, we've made enormous progress over the last 20 years, there's much more to do, but I would say that, you know, if we had not instituted, you know, rates that actually reflected the demands of the system, and made it a rate issue rather than an operating issue, which was another change, quite frankly, we wouldn't be here in the position we are in today, which is actually pretty darn good relative to other municipalities. And so notwithstanding the fact that we've got issues and stuff happens, we have a pretty, pretty good and advancing asset management plan that will help us, you know, strategically look at where we need to put the next round of investments. And the argument has been, and I think someone made this point, that infrastructure wasn't on anybody's radar in the 90s, until we actually started pushing the issue of infrastructure as being a higher priority that we needed to put dollars into. And since then, we've been adding capital dollars to the system to be able to address that. So I just want to not get lost in the notion that we're, you know, that we're in a bad place, we're actually in a good place, there's more to do. But I think our staff and the councils previously, you know, since the mid 90s, have done a really effective job of getting us to a better state than we were in when we, when we first got here. So compliments to our staff on that.
Thank you, Mayor Fred. Just to our new colleagues, it's approaching lunchtime. We don't break for lunch, we won't break for lunch, sometimes we do. We won't be doing that today, it's usually at the discretion of the mayor chair. We're going to keep going, we're almost through, we just have one first-time speaker, two second-time speakers for this major presentation, and then about 20 or 25 slides from the financial side, and then we conclude the day with the recommendations that are before us, so we do have a vote pending, unless you choose to table it. But you're going to start seeing some counselors wander off to the ante room to refresh themselves or maybe get a bite to eat, so you come and go as you please, quite obviously, today and for the next four years, but just do a quick, just do a quick head count before you leave, you always got to make sure we got nine to keep the meeting rolling. So with that, first-time speaker, welcome, Ward 6, Tom Jackson.
Wow. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm so awed by this question. I have to wait in the next place.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's going to be an interesting four years. Thank you very much. My apologies, Andrew and staff, for being late, just moving a little slow this morning, a little under the weather, so my apologies. But thank you, Andrew, for the individual time you and staff gave my office as well. And if a couple of these questions were previously asked, forgive me, but I think for public consumption, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's important. I know the returning counselors and the mayor will be familiar with a couple of my questions, but for especially the new members of council, it might be helping for their edification on programs. So Andrew, our frozen water pipe program, could you maybe fill GIC in on exactly what you have done to ensure we don't get in the situation, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we were in, I think it was in 2014, Andrew, where we had over a very unprecedented winter, where we had over 1,200 frozen water pipes. I think I have the dubious distinction of having over 200 in my Eastmount community, and how we were somewhat caught off-guard, and what you've done to ensure, well, that will never happen again, and we're prepared for the winter ahead. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, you are correct, winters of 2014 and 2015, we experienced some significant increase in the number of frozen services. You're correct, your ward was hit the worst, I think you were on my speed dial, and we talked pretty much every day. But what we have done in the background is looked at a couple of different options, and really, the biggest win that we've seen is, we are now monitoring the depth of frost when we're doing construction. So we talked about the approximately 300 water main breaks that we have in any given year, when we're out there, and it gets to the cold season, we're monitoring where that frost may be. When we see that get down to the level where it gives us a little bit of a worry, we reach out to those homeowners that have frozen in the past and advise them of the conditions are changing, and encourage them to run their water. Good example of how this worked was last year, we did see, I think it was right after Christmas, the temperature, it really dropped. So we did notify those residents, and nobody that had froze in previous years actually froze last year. We saw a few services come in, but anyone who was part of that 2014, 2015 fiasco did not freeze. So, you know, sometimes it doesn't require a huge engineering change, sometimes it can be something relatively simple. That being said, we are, our construction standards have changed, we are lowering services where applicable in new construction, so kind of looking at it from multiple angles.
Andrew, that's terrific, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that proactive communication, and from the 14, 15 unprecedented year of the enormous amount of frozen water pipes our homeowners exist, experienced across the city, that's wonderful. You, if you will, kept a list, so that you advise them going into the next winter, please ensure you do this, maybe let your tap run a little bit, whatever the case might be, and that they're on the list and they weren't forgotten, and an overall general promotional campaign in terms of what Hamilton Water Services recommends for our ratepayers across the city. So I'm really pleased about that. Just finishing on that point, Andrew, if there, if we were back to typical winters, I think you've told me, we average 40 to 50 across the city on a normal typical winter of frozen water pipes. If there's any savings, from what you earmarked from years gone by, have you put that, if you will, in the frozen water pipe reserve, so that you'll be prepared in case you get another winter of an increased number of frozen pipes? Or, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you, Andrew, maybe help us understand what you might do with that?
So, excuse me, sorry. So through you, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that part of the question, but I did see, I don't know if Dan wanted to speak to the previous point. Andrew, do you want me to go ahead with this part? Okay, so in terms, through you, Mr. Chairman, in terms of where we are going with funding, so I did mention in the presentation that we've kind of changed our budgeting strategy. When we got shell-shocked with 2014 and 15, we started to think that winters like that may be the norm. We started putting money into our general operating budget to deal with that, we have since peeled that out, and if we ever go through an event like that in the future, we will be coming forward with a report if we need to, to say, you know what, we need to access reserves to, in order to deal with this emergency. Our reserves right now, more of a finance question, but are in generally relatively good shape, so I think we do have some money for a rainy day fund.
Terrific, Andrew. Couple of other pro- Couple of other program points, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Andrew, you know, you and General Manager McKinnon, when he was in your position, Director of Hamilton Water Services, Director Mark Bainbridge, you know, one of the things that I've always asked between yourselves and the Roads Department and the Director of Engineering now, Gordon McGuire, for collaboration between when a road resurfacing or reconstruction's going to occur versus when Hamilton Water Services may have some work to do, poor water pressure, digging up pipes, broken sewer, water mains. One thing you know, Andrew, that just drives my constituents crazy and it's maddening, is when we've redone a beautiful new road and six months later or less, Hamilton Water's gone in and just carved up a number of these sites for whatever the legitimate reason might be. Maybe you can explain to this new GIC, I, I know you've done, you have done more collaboration between roads, but maybe just expand upon that, Mr. Deputy Mayor, please.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Dan was going to speak to something different, but just so I don't lose him this time, I'm going to let him speak first. And then if he doesn't answer this, I'll, I'll answer that for you.
Perfect. General Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think what you're describing, Counselor, is kind of the art of asset management. You know, in order to extend the life of a road, when we don't have enough budget to do a full reconstruction, we might do a shave and pave. But the risk that we always carry with that is we're not doing a full-blown reconstruction of all the underground below it. So that's an example of when we might do a shave and pave, and then a couple of months later, somebody's water line starts to leak or the sewer gets plugged in and we need to go in and dig it up. And while it's regrettable for all of us, we know that that's one of the risks that will always be present with our shave and pave program. So we would love to be able to, whenever we dig out a road, to replace everything in the corridor. The reality is, we can't afford that. We have to try to stretch our dollars as much as we can. So if we're going to reconstruct the road and we feel that the main sewer is in pretty good shape, or we may need to line it, we will do that. But in those circumstances where we're going to reconstruct the road and we're hopeful that the underground can last another 20 or 30 years, we'll always carry that risk of, you know, a water, a water service leaking or sewer ladder may be backing up. And while it looks terrible when it happens, I completely agree with you, but I think the, when you look at the entire capital program, it's very rare that that happens. The difficulty is when it does happen, it just, it does look very bad. So certainly appreciate that. I did want to just add one thing to the previous conversation about the frozen services.
Please.
You may remember that John Savoy in Finance did an excellent job a number of years ago with the RFP that he put out for the Service Line Warranties of Canada. I think John might have sent out an update recently. That's another tactic that homeowners can avail themselves to to try to prevent frozen services if they have the warranty program. The great work that John did, Hamilton was the first community, I think, in Canada to do this. And as a result of that, we actually benefit from this program being rolled out in other communities. So I think we've, you know, every year, we've kind of put another arrow in our quiver when it comes to dealing with frozen services, lead replacement, sewer line blockages and that kind of thing. So I didn't want to let the opportunity pass just to mind about the good work that Finance did and the Service Line Warranties of Canada.
Thank you, General Manager, and I concur, and thank you for all the answers you've given. And I concur about the Sewer Line Warranties of Canada program. So many of my constituents, Mr. Deputy Mayor, have taken advantage of it. It's almost having like an additional insurance premium to cover any potential break on your home. And many of my constituents at first skeptical, wondered, you know, city council endorsed a city council running this program. But once the skepticism has evaporated and more and more constituents have taken advantage of it, I can tell you, many homeowners have saved thousands of dollars by paying a small premium a year for covering both the line in front of their home on the, on the private side to their home and underneath their home as well. So thank you, and thank you, John Savoy, for that. And lastly, the backwater valve program, to, again, my new colleagues, really proud. This was, if you will, a community politically driven program a number of years ago in light of climate change, in light of the number of sewer backups that unfortunately older cities like Hamilton, Mr. Deputy Mayor, were experiencing. Maybe you could just give a quick recap, Andrew. Has there been good uptake, first of all, on the program across our city? This is for backwater valves being installed in the basement of homes to provide so that they prevent, hopefully, any, when there's a heavy rainfall, those, you know, once in 10, once in 20 year storms, that heavy rainfall, that rush, these backwater valves, hopefully most of the time prevent that from coming and flooding homeowner's basement. Has there been good uptake? And since we've revised the program, revised it, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the roster that we have of the plumbing companies, has it been more transparent, accountable, and keeping within the budget, if you will, Andrew? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little prepared for this because we had this discussion earlier. So it is, and just before I jump into the backwater valve, if anyone, because we always talk about people listening, if you have a backwater valve, you need to maintain your backwater valve. It's very easy to do, but if you have a backwater valve installed and you never look at it, and then in time of need, when you want it to operate, it may not function as intended. So there's lots of information on how to do that on our website, but just take the opportunity to, to say that publicly as well. So yes, we did talk about the history of the exploitation of the previous model. The new rostered model is working extremely well. We saw, you recall that the price went down from, you know, $22,000 to, I think, approximately $1,250 per install. So we are reducing our budget this year for that program. I did make it very clear that that's not saying we are anticipating to install any less backwater valves. We're just seeing the benefits of this more competitive procurement process. We have had no complaints about the contractors. Our team still meets with them regularly to make sure we are providing the best service we can, and all customer feedback so far has been, has been very good.
Excellent, Andrew. Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you. And by the way, for our homeowners, insurance companies now are often, for renewals, looking to see if the homeowner has purchased a backwater valve. I can tell you, a number of my constituents have shown me that from their insurance renewal that's come in the mail to ask to keep the sewer backup coverage, that they've asked if you have installed a backwater valve. So I think we're leaders in so many ways, and Andrew, I'm, you've carried on wonderfully in the leadership that our General Manager had before you. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Second time, Counselor Johnson.
Deputy Mayor, I was remiss, actually. I had the paper sitting here and I forgot to ask. So through you to Andrew, the motion that we have in front of us right now, if you could go, I think it's on slide 24, you briefly mention it, but it's not in detail. No, maybe one more, please.
About the airport, about works at the airport. It is in here somewhere, I agree. So it's certainly not reflected heavily in my presentation. This was kind of a, I mean, this is something that is moving very quickly, so we have been working with all our partners, and I know Mike wanted to speak to this.
Thank you. And through you to Mike. Mike, can you just speak to this motion? I just have some questions.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Over the last number of months, SLT and more particular Finance, Planning, Economic Development and Public Works have been focused on a number of council strategic priorities and economic prosperity and growth being one of them. Where we identified a gap was the servicing required in order for us to ensure that the pace of development within the AEGD proceeds according to what the market is demanding. And so the motion before you ensures that the investments that we are required to make to ensure that those lands are serviceable for future expansion are in place with the pace of the market. And while it represents a significant investment, about $11 billion, you'll see that the, sorry, $11 million.
Yeah, thank you. That would have been a big no.
Yeah, that the funding source, again, these are growth-related projects, the funding source is a split between reserves, residential and non-residential reserves. But again, it is where we've identified a need as it relates to, again, diversity of our environment, ensuring that we're creating job opportunities, is we've identified a more immediate need with respect to these projects, and again, to be funded from our development charge reserves.
And thank you for that, Mike, and I'm glad you, you mentioned this. Why residential development charges? This is AEGD lands, it's employment lands. I can tell you that we've been denying all the development for housing in this area.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, great question, and we'll be getting into more of these conversations in the months ahead as we bring forward our development charge background study and our development bylaw. So there is a formula as it relates to this project, and there's a split to existing and a split to development, and the split in terms of the formula as it relates to residential and non-residential. And again, there's a science behind this. So there is some benefit to residential, and it may be at the end of Dickinson, I'm not the expert in terms of the planning, but at the end of Mount Hope. And so again, there is some benefit to residential versus non.
Okay, so just to be clear now, Dickinson is all in the rural area, so there's no way that they'd ever see sewer and water. AEGD lands, however, are different. So where, part of Mount Hope, are we talking here? Because those that are listening in are going to now think they're going to get sewer and water in the rural area.
Through the Chair to the Counselor, I'm glad you raised that point. It's not going in the rural area, it's not going to the east. This is servicing along the Upper James Corridor that services the approved airport employment lands and the airport proper, along with the residential development that's included as part of the Lancaster development and all those little infills that go through there. So this is the servicing to support both the, primarily the industrial piece, but also provide for residual capacity as we need it.
And thank you for that, but if I look at the formula you're using right now, over 60% of residential DCs are paying for this, and yet it's not 60% residential that's going to be serviced or benefit from it.
Through the Counselor to, through the Chair to the Counselor, maybe we can have that discussion offline, because these are how the projects are all identified in the current DC background study, and it's done on a basis of a collective system in terms of how capacity is being allocated. So I don't have those numbers in front of me, but the previous background had a breakdown in terms of how we approach the various projects as we approach both our res and non-res splits.
Okay, and that's great, we can do this offline. I still think that it's raising some questions, but, and logistically, you said this is to do, to service the Upper James. Are we taking the pipe and we're pulling it along Golf Club over to Dickinson, over to Upper James? Logistically, where's this pipe going to be coming from? After all the debacle we're dealing with with the Highway 56 project, I just want to be prepared. So if we can have that discussion, I'd really appreciate it, because I don't want to end up having the same issues that I'm dealing with right now. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. You'll be well-prepared when this motion hits the floor in about an hour or two from now, I'm sure. Counselor Wilson, second time.
I pressed your, let me just, just leave it alone right now and I'll activate you. There you go.
I didn't touch it. Thank you. Through you, I just want to make sure I understand what Counselor Johnson was speaking about. You're asking for approval of this with respect to the airport, and you're so doing in advance of the development charges renewal by law.
Okay, we, I let, I let a little leeway go, we'll still continue to, because I didn't mention that we were letting some leeway go. But in the order of things, generally, these questions would be asked when the motion hits the floor, the amending motion in this case. But that's okay, since I let it go for the Ward Counselor. We'll let you get some clarity since it's fresh of mind, Counselor Wilson, but through you to, through me to, Surjeet, still, Tony Surjeet.
Through the Chair to the Counselor, what we're referring to is the current DC bylaw. We're not talking about the future DC bylaw that has to be in place for 2019.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I can expand, is the methodology, is the methodology that's used as part of our current DC bylaw, the recommendation, the motion or section X, five two AX, is that this project be referred to the upcoming DC background study? So it will be part of the conversation at our upcoming DC background study.
Okay, no more questions. So move to receive the presentation that is moved by Counselor Ferguson and seconded by Counselor Pearson. Andrew, thank you. I'm glad you mentioned of all the very significant work through many divisions and the significance and the timing of this particular presentation here today, I was glad you could squeak in one little corner of Bay Street and the experimental rain garden pilot. But you mentioned the two benefits. It acts as a road calming, and I believe you also mentioned that it's, because it's a pilot, we're able to study it. But it's also a beautification as a third benefit. So there's the stormwater mitigation, there's this traffic calming, but it's an annualized garden, I believe you call it perennial or annual? If it comes back all the time, what is it? Asking the wrong guy. But I'm glad you put it in the presentation, because it may explode across the city. I think it'll be very desirable. So far, it's going over very well. So thank you. Move to receive, then raise your hand. Any opposed? See, that's disastrous so far. I'm sure there's people that wish to receive a presentation, but maybe just didn't want to participate in physically having to raise their hand, exhausted at this three-hour mark.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, this is not something that Clerks created. The Governance Committee approved this, and then Council subsequently approved it. So if you don't want to do this, by all means, you can change the bylaw that you approved back to the other way.
For now, I'm working with the current bylaw. I can't do that here today. We have to go to governance with this here issue. So I'm just going to go with the old-fashioned method. So we'll just hear carried, and I think we heard enough of it. It's not usually controversial to receive a presentation. We have now a more, a briefer presentation from our Acting Director of Finance. And Counselor Marula, if I may ask you to just take the chair for four minutes, you can do so from that seat. I would appreciate it while this presentation continues.
Okay, I think I'm good to go now.
Good to go. Good afternoon. So yeah, thanks, Andrew, for that presentation, and as what you saw from Andrew's presentation, he touched on a number of the items. I'll try not to duplicate information that, that he had in his presentation, but there naturally is, is some duplication. What I'm going to touch on today is, I'm going to take you through a number of slides on the operating and capital budget. We're going to look at the rate revenues, the consumption, municipal comparators, and capital investment and the capital financing plan. So in addition to our, the team in Public Works that helped put together the rate presentation and the rate budget, staff in Finance, Corporate Services and Finance and Administration are critical to getting the budget together for these, for these meetings, and I'd like to thank them, and a few of them are here in the crowd. So as you know, the, the budget represents the financial plan to meet the needs of our community. You're going to, we're going to cover off the plan for maintaining the assets with a replacement value of about $10 billion and the plan for growth. On the rate budget snapshot, so in the document, and sorry, the report that you were presented with and sent out in advance, some of the highlights there are that there's a $223, $222 million program expenditures, and then to offset those or to meet those program expenditures, there's rate revenue and non-rate revenue, and I'll get into some of those discussions in a few minutes. So in addition, the capital budget, the 2019 capital budget has $273 million. So the program across the three, the three areas, so wastewater is about 55% of that total, water is 30%, and storm is another 15%. And over the next 10-year period, in that document, in that report, there's about $2.34 billion in capital investment that we're forecasting. So as you know, we bring these 10-year plans to you every year, and that's an increase of, from last year, of .42 billion dollars. One of the things that we tried to do and was to let you know what our dollars are buying in that, in that budget that's before you. So combination of operating budget programs and capital and capital projects are in this list. So there's sewer inspections, there's sewer lining programs, there's water inspections and water lining programs, leak detection, 1,100 in-fall-out fall inspections, 2,900 preventive maintenance work orders. So some of that was part of the discussion that you heard earlier about some of the work that's being done in Hamilton Water. So by the numbers, and this is presented in the, in Appendix A to the, to the report, and also one of the tables in the report, I just highlighted a minute ago, the $222 million requested budget, operating expenditure budget. So there was a breakdown in the operating expenditure budget of, between the program expenditures and then the capital financing expenditures. So that's what you can see there, the $126 million for the capital financing and the $95 million for, for program expenditures. And as you'll see, so we'll, we'll be talking about the rate increase. You heard earlier about the residential rate increase of the 4.66%. about the, the residential rate increase of the 4.66%. When we look at the pure dollars, the expenditures are going up by 5.4%, and the revenues are up 5.4% to match, to match the, those expenditures. On the capital budget, so the source of funding for the capital budget, so I mentioned that it is, in addition to state of good repair, there is growth-related projects. So some of the revenues are coming from grants and subsidies, development charge revenue. The capital budget is also financed from the operating budget. You'll hear us talk about that in a few minutes, you heard about it earlier. There's also reserves that we use to finance the $273 million in capital expenditures. And then what we have here is the work-in-progress projects, so projects that were previously approved by council, when, when we're going through to develop the 2019 capital budget, they look at whatever surpluses might be, be available in individual projects, and they move that funding forward to, to take, to be used in this year's capital budget projects. Then in addition, we have some debt that, that we'll, we'll issue. When we get into where the dollars come from, and how many accounts, so you heard earlier when a lecturer was here, she mentioned that there was 152,000 accounts, and the split between the residential and the industrial, commercial, institutional, and multi-res, the split there is 93.7. Now, but when it comes to the revenue, the residents generate about 48% of the revenue, and the ICI and multi-res generate 52% of that. Now, when we get into specific rate information, I think some of the councillors were asking earlier about a, what the past trend was. So as you can see, the, what that black bar is, the average over the past 10 years, that average is around 4.4 to 5%. And that's what council has been approving for the past, past 10 years, and as you've heard, we've, we've recommended in the report 4.66%. And that increase is the same increase that we brought forward last year, in last year's, last year's rate, rate budget report. So we're consistent with that. Some of the costs might have been moved around, but it's, it's, it's the same percentage increase, and we're, we're aware of what, what we put forward, and we try to stick to those, stick to those guidelines. That's basically what our model that we develop. We, you know, we try to maintain some kind of standard, normalized increase, and these are the, these are the rate increases that we need to maintain the system and service, service the community. So on the average residential bill, currently right now, it's, the average residential bill is $690.70. That'll be increasing, recommended to be increased to $722.90, so that's $32.20 of an increase. And that's based on the average consumption of 200 cubic meters. Previous years, that would have been higher, but now it's, now we're standardized at the 200 cubic meters. Regarding consumption, we have essentially four sources of our, of our consumption. We have our residential, and that consumption in the, in the past four years has been, and the forecast is, we're assuming that it's going to be fairly consistent. Same with our ICI and multi-res. And we have a couple contracts, we provide water to Halton Region in the Aldershot area, and in Haldeman County to Caledonia, Keegah, and Halton Region is consistent, and we see a slight growth in the Caledonia area. But those two, those two contracts are relatively minor in comparison to our overall revenues and consumption. When we start talking about residential consumption, so we have 11,000, about 11,000 more accounts during that period from 2011 to 2017. So that's, that's about a 7% increase to the 152,000 accounts that I mentioned earlier. So, so despite the growth in the new homes, we're not seeing the associated increase in water consumption, so in fact, our residential consumption has, has decreased over that same period. Regarding the industrial, commercial, institutional, and multi-res consumption, what you can see from this, this chart is that, it's like I mentioned, it's fairly consistent over the past, past few years, at just under 30 million cubic meters a year. And so our forecast going forward in our financial model basically accepts the, sorry, expects the same, same increases. So we may have had situations where certain companies, you may, may recall, it was the Hamilton Specialty Bar ceased operations, so over a million dollars in revenue would be lost with them leaving, and about 300,000 cubic meters are going to be coming off those, off those totals. So with, with every company that we lose, we're hoping that we're going to gain some else through our economic development strategies. When we talk about our, our rate and our, and our water, our water bills, we have, we participate in a study from BMA Management Consulting, and this is the result of the 2017 study. So Hamilton is over, has the .7%, your water bill is a .7% of your household income. So we're at the, with the far end, which is, which is, which is great. In the past, we would have maybe been around, been around the middle, around that 1%. So we've seen some improvements in where we are there, but that also means is that as far as our investment goes, it's, you know, if we want to be closer towards the middle, then our investment in, in our rate increases would, would be increasing. But this is also a factor, as, as I mentioned, about the household, household income. But going in line with that, we look at how we compare to other municipalities. So Hamilton, this is last year's information, the 2018 water bill, we don't have any forecasts on where the municipalities are going, going forward this year yet, as they're all developing their budgets. So Hamilton is down at the, at the low end there, at $690, last year's, last year's average, average water bill. Only Peel is below us in our, in our list here. And what we do, as you may have heard me mention, in our water bill, we have, we cover off water, wastewater, and stormwater. So there's a lot of services covered off in that water bill that come from the water and wastewater rates, and in other municipalities, the ones that are purple, their stormwater is funded by the property tax, tax rate. Sorry, and in other cases, in the green, their, their stormwater is included in that rate. So there's an opportunity there for, you know, to, you know, when we, when we compare against other municipalities. Well, you've heard, you saw a lot of the, a lot of the pictures and information that Andrew provided in his slide about some of our capital investments. And you heard mention of the asset management regulations and Bill 6, and this is where, you know, where we're looking in the, in the future about our, our plan. So the asset management plan, as Mike mentioned and Dan mentioned, we presented some information back to General Issues Committee back on September the 17th, giving an overview. So Mike did mention that we have a strategic asset management policy that has to come before council and be approved by July 1st, 2019. Our core assets, which are our water, wastewater, storm assets, in addition to our roads and bridges and structures, those core assets, an asset management plan has to be approved by July 1st, 2020, and then all of our other assets are two years later, July 1st, 2023. So part of that asset management plan that's going to be taking place in, in 2021, it's, we're going to, we talk about our asset profiles, and that's going to be the age and the condition of those assets and the replacement cost, then we're going to be addressing our levels of service. A lot of discussion earlier about the, the state of the infrastructure and the infrastructure deficit, so that'll continue to be addressed as we, as we move forward. So over the, the, the current year, I touched on this earlier, but $273 million is our 2019 capital program, and then going out to the four years, we, you know, we've been talking about multi-year budgeting, so we're a bit of a concentration on the next, on the next four years. The level of accuracy of our information is, is, you know, is particularly good in the initial years. As we get out further, it's a little more difficult to predict the type of work that we're going to be, where we're going to need to spend the money, so, but we, we've always been doing that and putting out some, some of the, some of those projections into the, into the future. So some of the specific projects that you're going to see in the, in the future, so there's a, what we're highlighting on this slide, is it's the same, the same numbers, the same $2.34 billion over the 10 years. So as Andrew mentioned, we have the wastewater treatment plan upgrade that's in the works and covered off in the next three years, 2019, 2020, and 21, is, is that upgrade in those. So that's why the, yes, the spend is particularly high at this time. It goes much lower in the 2022 to 2025 period, and then it ramps back up with the wastewater treatment expansion in 2026. So that wastewater treatment expansion, that's a, you know, a $406 million program, that's, that begins basically in 2026. Regarding the capital financing strategy, so how do we pay, how do we pay for the, for the capital? So what this chart shows, and it's, it's, it's a information that would be in your, in your, in your report, $126 million in 2019 is funded from the operating budget through debt charges, or a straight contribution from the operating budget to the capital budget, and we refer to that as the, as a rate contribution. So basically, from the rate revenues, that's that, that's the amount that, that is funded for, to fund the capital budget. And then we have development charge exemption, so we have an amount of, just checking, making sure it's $9 million? Yeah, $9 million, so. And that's basically similar as we, the, that light green bar going forward, we, we're projecting that we have a $9 million going forward, out until 2028, nine, or I think we can maybe drop it down to $8 million in future years. And the rate contribution, as you can see, it changes. So some of the, if you look at the, you know, the percentage of the, of that, of that strategy right now, it's about 56, so 56% of our, our budget is coming from capital financing. In the future, that moves to 62% of our operating budget comes from capital, capital financing. So we mentioned, we mentioned debt, and tomorrow, we're also having, you're having a budget, GIC, yeah, GIC budget presentation on the tax capital budget. There'll be more information on there about our total debt profile and our total picture. I'm going to concentrate on what is in the, in the rate budget. So currently, in our rate budget, and we separate it out from what is funded from rates and what's funded from DCs, so the, the yellowish, or beige maybe, that's funded from, that's funded from DCs, and you'll see how that grows in the future, and that's primarily related to the wastewater treatment plan expansion, that's primarily, or almost all actually, sorry, development charge funded, and we expect that we'll be issuing debt for that The cost of that debt is impacted in your, in the rate operating budget, so the, the green is funded from debt charges, so that, that will not be met from the, from the revenues, but the, the blue bars, the funded from, the funded from the rates amount, so that's fairly constant as you get past into, into 2022 to 2028. But as I mentioned, that, that green, those green bars go up as far as the amount that is being, going to be funded from development charges. So a bit of the discussion we had about the, the airport and some of the other developments that are coming on stream in the future, will be, will be, you know, collecting development charges and having to, having to fund it from the development charges in the, in the future. And, and as Mike mentioned, you'll be hearing about that through the development charge background study. So we have reserves, and that did come up in the earlier presentation as well, so we have water, wastewater, and storm reserves. We have, we have targets that we established at about half a percent to 2% of the replacement value of those systems. The, so this shows the combination of the three main water, wastewater, and storm reserves, and where they're going, so where they sit right now. And this, so this does not include the $100 million provincial subsidy reserve that we have, have separately. So we're, we're, you know, in the future, we're going to be using, you know, we're going to be using those, those reserves for our capital program, and then it, then it basically staples off around that, around that $80 million. And that is the end of the presentation, so I kind of went through it kind of quickly. So as far as next steps, so, you know, in addition to whether you receive this presentation or have questions, we'll find out in a minute, but we have another scheduled General Issues Committee meeting for the rate budget next, next Thursday, and then council is December the 19th. Thank you, Stephanie.
Excellent, Brian.
Any questions?
Very well done. We do have Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just on the last slide, I heard you indicate, I guess the goal is 2%, setting aside 2% for the development charges. So where do we stand in terms of the sustainability of the development charges in that 2%? Are we at the right amount, or are we lower?
Yeah, no, so through the chair, so our, our, we established the targets for those reserves, sorry, to be half a percent to 2% of the replacement value of the, of the reserves, sorry, of the assets. So these, these reserves are, you know, they're slightly below, they're at the lower end of that half a percent of the replacement value, at the $80 million. Yeah, so this, yeah, so this doesn't reflect the development charges, this is simply the, the capital financing projects that we use to finance the capital projects. I'm not showing the development charge reserves in this, in this particular slide.
So we haven't met the goal yet in terms of actual replacement costing?
Through the chair, correct.
Thank you. All right, thank you. No further questions. Move to receive, Councillor Clark.
I want to receive the presentation, seconded by Mayor Fred Eisenberger. All in favor?
Carried. Any opposed? None, thank you, Brian, good job. And now we have that amending motion that was referred to earlier. This is item 52, 2019 Recommended Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Budget Amending Motion. And Councillor Ferguson, you'd like to move that?
Yes, I would, Mr Chair. I'd like to move this motion, this was, I've talked extensively to our city manager about this. This has no, no impact to the rate budget, it's 100% from reserves, and the purpose of it is to allow us to continue to advance the airport employment growth district. The main pipe is almost there, it's coming up from the stream and plant, and is, is making good progress. So this is another phase that's required to open up that, the, not the Ann Castro, but the airport employment growth district. And, so I'm fully prepared to move this, Mr Chair, and seconded by the mayor.
Great.
As an amendment to the rate budget.
All right, on the motion, I have a question, I'm going to put myself on the speakers list. Councillor Marula, if you could take the chair again, I don't know why I'm going to you, but, through you, Councillor Marula, staff, so we're obviously taking into consideration recent interests, but we've heard publicly about some, but I'm sure there's other interests looming. I know economic development is not here, and they've been sort of stick-handling negotiations for vast swaths of airport, airport employment growth. With what's before us monetarily, are we well-prepared for those pending announcements as well regarding future growth, or are we just addressing what we've heard about recently in terms of those warehouses? Through you, Councillor Marula.
So through the chair, as I would, my message would be, is we are prepared to, to support the recent announcements, and that this infrastructure is critical to position us to support future expansion.
In addition to the recent announcements. Okay, thank you. I'll take the chair back, and the motion's on the floor. It's moved by Councillor Ferguson, seconded by Mayor Fred Eisenberger, Councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I absolutely support the, the intent of the motion, but I think there's broader implications in doing this. This is not just about meeting the needs at the airport, but when you bring these lines and, and, and services in, are you not now expanding the potential for residential growth in already aligned growth-related areas that are lacking the capacity to build?
So if we could just briefly reiterate what we've already touched on, about 10 minutes ago, you may have missed.
Through the chair to the councillor, this is to service what has been approved by council within the AEGD industrial and the Mount Hope District. There is no rural servicing going on here.
But the, the areas that are already within the urban boundary that, because we, we started with a phased development based on our, our service levels, is that now expediting and facilitating some of that growth-related residential within the urban boundary?
Can I have the councillor repeat that?
I'll, I'll take it offline, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Brendan Johnson.
Yeah, just really quickly, and, and Tony, I heard you say earlier that this has got nothing to do with east of James, Upper James. Just quickly, is this the same pipe, and I think I asked this, I don't remember the answer, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it, is this the same pipeline that's coming down Dickinson, or is this the one that's strictly on Upper James? Or is this two different pipelines we're talking about?
Through the chair to the councillor, you're 100% correct, it's not Dickinson Road. This is the servicing that is, that we're enhancing on Upper James, Upper James.
Just Upper James.
Correct.
So it's not going to cut across Glambrook, it's not cutting across Rymall or Golf Club, this is a totally different pipe?
This is the existing enhancements through that system that's already in place.
Thank you. So am I to expect then we're going to get another motion coming forward for that secondary pipe I just mentioned?
Through the chair to the councillor, the Dickinson trunk system has already been projected in the operating and rates budget, and that's part of the ongoing and that's part of the ongoing implementation. As Counselor Ferguson indicated, Upper Centennial has been commissioned up to the Swayze Lands. And this is going to be the next extension going westerly as part of the Dickinson trunk. The motion in front of you is not related to that piece of it.
Thank you.
Oh, this is on the floor. Moved by, oh, one more on the motion.
I understand that ultimately, we will be voting on this at the budget. So I'm not opposed to going for it at this present time. I'm a little bit confused, though. The Centennial trunk was supposed to be veering off and going over to airport grid property. That's the way it was presented to the public. And I'm confused now because we have this one coming on Upper James, but we're also doing one from Centennial, so.
Through the chair to the council. Upper Centennial is the old fault for the entire district. The Dickinson trunk, which has been planned within the budget, goes from Highway 20 to Upper James. What we're referring to is the enhancements to support the outlets that go along Upper James, including potential station upgrades and force main upgrades to get to those outlets from a timing perspective. That's what we're working on.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, sorry.
Move by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Mayor Fred Eisenberger. All in favor? Any opposed? Asked unanimously. And now a motion, mover and a seconder for the report as amended at this point. Moved by Counselor Pearson. No one's offering. It's before you. It's the report before us with, how many recommendations? Counselor, Poparella?
It will go through, the amending motion actually has to be relettered, but I'll just do that in there. Right now, it goes up to page five, Beas and Victor. And that's what you are approving right now as amended. And it will go to council with the information from tomorrow as well on December the 19th, which is when you will approve it.
Counselor Ferguson?
So just for clarity, then, through you to Kirk, there's no need for the meeting next week on the rate budget because this will finish the rate budget. Is that correct?
If there are no other questions with respect to what's in the report before you, this won't go forward to next week?
Correct. Well, so the next Thursday's meeting would be canceled as we finish the rate budget?
Correct.
Other than ratification by council?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be prepared to move it if you like, Mr. Chair.
On the motion, I don't have a secondary. I actually have the mayor wishing to move it, but you also indicated, Counselor Pearson? Seconded by Counselor Pearson, Counselor Clark.
So we're passing the rate budget today. And I haven't been fully briefed by staff on the rate budget because there was almost no time to get that done between inauguration and today. To the clerk.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, what I would recommend to Counselor Clark is that between now and council, he would have time to meet with staff and answer any questions that he may have. And then if he can make his decision before council.
I understand, thank you.
Counselor Whitehead?
As a person on principle, didn't support the rate budget last, I believe it was last year, maybe it was the year before. Well, the reason for it is that I pulled out my notes in the original rates budget when we led the way versus every other municipality on this front. And we were promised within 10 years that the rates would drop down to cost of inflation. And I have those notes. And that's exactly what didn't happen. And that was, so it was a principled position saying, look, you come in here and provide a plan. I understand there's been changing circumstances and climate change and all those other things that have contributed, freezing pipes and sulfur that contribute to these additional costs. It was a principled position. Having said that, I am, and I did have a chance that Counselor Clark hasn't had, to sit down with staff, ask some very tough questions. And I fully endorse and support the rate budget as put forward. Thanks.
And to our new members, you can support this or not today. You can vote against it. You can support it, and Counselor Clark, I think, has alluded to this. And I think it's a very fair comment, given the time from October 22nd until now. You may have a lot of questions still to be answered between now and ratification, which is council on December the 19th. So you could always amend your position at that time, but that'll be your final position on the 19th. If you have questions offline, or you may be ready to support that here today.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
The clerk's going to help me here, too.
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a reminder, if you choose not to support it today and it is defeated today, it will not go to council. So please, it's almost better if you're 99% sure you're in favor to go ahead and endorse it here. And you can change your mind at council. But if you defeat it here today, you will hold up the budget process. And I don't think you really want to do that.
Fair enough, okay, good point. And it's now moved by Mayor Fred Eisenberger and seconded by Counselor Pearson. All in favor? Any opposed? Sorry, I did say as amended earlier. So staff, as amended, the motion is before you. And that is moved by Mayor Fred Eisenberger and seconded by Counselor Pearson. All in favor? Any opposed? I see none. I forgot one other angle. You could just sort of slip out of the room for a second or two. Welcome back, savvy clerk. Yes, we're unanimous at this point in time. Come on back in now. All right, now I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for, what am I looking for? A mover and seconder for the, no, I've done that already. The report is amended. Any discussion on the amendment? Oh, we didn't, I did that, all right. So any notices of motion at this point? Anybody? No notices of motion?
Direction. Can I ask staff to come forward with a robust report or overview of what is taking place in the context of the project with Redeemer and what the actual findings are and what it means moving forward?
Thank you. All right, we'll use that as just sort of direction. Direction, okay, thanks. Excellent.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, that would need to go to the appropriate committee because I'm not sure the subject matters. So it doesn't necessarily mean GIC if it's a public works matter, just for clarification. And to answer another question that came up in case there's others asking, you had a confidential appendix T. Nobody had any questions about it. It was to item 5.2. We didn't move into closed session, and the matter has now been voted on and closed.
Right, move to adjourn. Mayor Fred Eisenberger, seconded by Counselor Marula. All in favor? Carried, any opposed? Seeing none. Thank you all.